Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, January 8th, 2026. Vibrating loud, commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Markwart.
Here.
Commissioner Mallory.
Here.
Commissioner Brel.
Here.
And if you all stand for the invocation, please. Fathers, we gather for this meeting of the new year. We pause in gratitude for the opportunities and responsibilities before us. Grant us this commission wisdom that is steady, vision that is clear, and cooperation that strengthens our community. Guide our discussions, shape our decisions, and help us serve with integrity, fairness, and compassion. May this year be one of renewed commitment to the people we represent. And we're going to keep Commissioner Brel in our prayers at the loss of her mama. And as they navigate that, in your precious name, we pray, amen.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures.
Sorry. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll start off with our sheriff's office report.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
David Black, Otero County Sheriff.
Good morning.
I'm going to try to get this started. It's a little more lengthy than usual because I'm going to kind of give you our December report, and then I'll give you kind of a year-end report on numbers and stuff, so try to make it as quick as possible. For December 2025, we responded to 1,810 calls for service. Average is about 60 calls a day. Generated 235 investigative reports, 59 traffic crash investigations, 62 arrests, 116 traffic citations, served 337 subpoenas for the courts. Calls responded to in Tulareosa was 47, and Cloudcroft was 43. In Alamogordo was 345. Responded in Chaparral was 566. That's kind of about the average. Fifty-three reports in Chappa, 16 arrests, and we had threw this in here just because it's one of our higher ones, 70 animal calls down there. For the year, we had 26,207 calls for service. 3,001 investigative reports, 661 traffic crash investigations, 854 arrests, 1,196 citations, 3,660 subpoenas for the courts, 739 calls in Tulareosa, 745 in Cloudcroft, 4,910 calls in Alamogordo, and 8,442 for the year in Chaparral. Transports, I wanted to throw this on there just to kind of give you an idea of what else we've been doing. 111 transports, prisoner transports. We put 69,447 miles on the vehicle, 855 man-hours. We spent about 44,000, almost 45,000 in transport expenses. For narcotics, December, 11 search warrants, 13 arrests, one agency assist, 54 case reports, two checkpoint cases, one interdiction case, $3,655 in cash seized, 14 vehicles seized, seven firearms seized, six traffic stops, five fugitives that were apprehended, 315.9 grams of meth, 249.7 grams of heroin, 146 Suboxone strips, 40.87 grams of cocaine, 2.27 grams of fentanyl powder, and 10,995 fentanyl pills. About $232,000 worth of illegal narcotics seized for the month of December. For year, we had 111 search warrants, 278 arrests, nine agency assists, 651 case reports, two checkpoint cases, two interdiction cases, $99,154 in cash that was seized, total of 120 vehicles seized, 62 firearms, 96 traffic stops, 134 fugitives apprehended, two overdose case investigations, 39 jail possession cases, 2,434 grams of meth was seized, 866 grams of heroin, 31.05 grams of marijuana, 219 prescription pills, 611 Suboxone strips, 28.8 grams of Suboxone, 176 grams of cocaine, 327 other prescription pills that they didn't have a prescription for, 271 grams of fentanyl powder, and a total of 26,169 fentanyl pills that were seized. Total for the year was $911,270. In our special events for December, we had the Shop With The Cop, and then we did the Alamogordo Christmas Parade. And for the year, we had a total of 37 public relations events that we had. In our training, we have now, everybody's completed all their 45 hours of the state mandated training, all firearms qualifications, and we've all finished up our red dot training classes, which puts us in compliance with all state requirements. Now we will begin this two-year training cycle again, and everything we just finished, we get to do it again. Beginning, probably the next report, I'll have some advanced training and stuff. Some of this specialized stuff that some of these deputies and stuff go to, I'll start giving you kind of a report on what they're going to and how that can, you know, help better the agency. On December 13th, we had four deputies graduate the Southern New Mexico Law Enforcement Academy. Shortly after that, we had Deputy Manzo join the sheriff's office, also graduated the same academy. All five deputies are now in their post-academy training. Within the next week or so, they'll start FDO program. Nicholas Santiago was hard as uncertified. He just went through the pre-academy physical fitness over in Hops. And as expected, he passed this assessment with flying colors. He did really, really well. You've got entry level standards, and you've got exit standards. He's already surpassed all the exit standards, so he's doing really, really well. He will continue in training until he leaves to start the academy on January 26th. We currently have two positions open with lateral. One lateral in the background phase, hopefully to start by the end of the month to fill one of the positions. But we'll be looking at, we were losing Deputy Schoolcraft. His last day is the 19th. He'll start in Cloudcroft on the 20th. Then I got another one that will be leaving in February, so we're working on a physical fitness assessment. We're, I think we've got close to 20 people already, applications already submitted that they'll test, and we'll try to get those positions filled. In our vehicles, we still got two that are really, really close to being done and end up patrolling, and then we got three more that we'll get the upfitting started on that and get those in rotation pretty soon, so. That is all I've got, unless you have any questions.
David, is there any way I could get a copy of them numbers? I got to go to Chaparral Monday night, so I can kind of tell them if.
Yeah, it's got it already.
Perfect, thank you.
Is it too early to talk about our new team that they've so just formed?
No, not really. We talked about, we had a meeting last night. So we do have a, what we call a tactical response team that we're putting together. There's so many times that situations arise where we have to call either state police or Vortech out of El Paso and stuff like that to handle some situations that meet certain criterias that that I don't have the people trained to handle those situations. So we're putting a team together to handle those situations. Like I say, it's in the very beginning phases right now. We got, I think it was 15 that are vying for the positions on the team. So, but yeah, it's into works. Hopefully, in about six months, we will have them through their required training through NTOA and get them all certified to, when cops need help, this is the group they're going to call. So it, I'm looking forward to it. It's going to be a good deal, something we've been needing for a while. I just, I just had to make sure that my foundation was good first. I've got a good foundation now. So now we can cut branching out to some specialty stuff a little bit more, so.
Vortech will be a tough one to outdo those guys, the ones from El Paso.
Oh, yeah.
You going to get a dog, too?
We're working on that. I think if I do one, I'll probably do two.
Oh, really?
Just to, yeah, that's next on the list. We've got our interdiction team. We're fixing to get a couple of guys put on our traffic team. We got complaints, you know, around the county or, you know, as far as, you know, a lot of speeding. We identify some areas that we're having lots of crashes and stuff at. I got this traffic team that will go and do some patrols in that area, try to slow some people down, remind them that this is the speed limit, and, you know, we need to quit crashing, so. Now the TRT, the team that we're putting together now, and that's, that's next on my list after TRT is. I'd love to have a couple of dogs, so.
Live ones or robot ones?
Live ones.
Oh.
I can't afford them robot ones. I don't think you're going to give me $300,000 for a robot dog.
They're pretty impressive, them robot ones.
They are impressive, so.
Do you have anything?
No, thank you very much for everything.
You guys have been busy. It's a busy year.
Yes, very busy.
When you realize how many people work at the sheriff's office and you look at those numbers, it's pretty impressive that you guys do that much, so thank you.
Yeah, they do a lot, so, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Coming in hot.
Yep. Good morning, commissioners. John Barney, 911 Director. For the month of December, we did 2,567 911 calls. Our statistics are a little skewed on December because we did roll over to ESSY, so it kind of changed some of our numbers a little bit. Our admin lines, we did 4,784. Our alarm lines, we had 44. Fire, 276. Law, 910. Outbound, 2,321. Fire rescue line, which is that new line where agencies can transfer via 911 where it's just for fire and EMS. We had 21 transfers to that with a total of 10,375 call, or yes, calls. For the month of, or I'm sorry, for the year of 2025, again, a little bit different just because we moved from Call Works to Carbine in the middle of the year. So the best statistics we got, we did about 33,109 11s, 60,500 admin lines with a total of 141,661 calls into the 911 center. Our abandoned rate for December was 4.67, higher than it's been, with a total of 392 abandoned 911s. Busiest times for the month was 5:00, 6:00, and 12:00 p.m. And kind of go over some of our records and NCIC numbers. Our NCIC division did 4,800 validations, so every month they get a validation list from the FBI of all the entries that we have in our system, vehicles, missing people, stolen license plates, articles, and including warrants where we have to work with the courts. We have to contact the people. Is your vehicle still stolen? Is your gun still stolen? So last year, they did 4,800 of those validations, which is required by the FBI. They entered in 2025 warrant-wise, 2,364 warrants. We hold about 5,000 active warrants in our, in our system currently right now. And that's between Mag Court District and Municipal, along with JPO and APO. And then including Mescalero now because we hold their warrants. For staffing, we have one currently in backgrounds. We have three additional starting testing this week, and we have three starting here next week and the following week. So we're bringing some people in. Two of our trainees just cleared call-taking phase. They each moved over to law or fire dispatch. And all of our dispatchers have completed their annual training, so that has been submitted off to the state for reissue of their new certifications. It's been a couple of months, but this is my deputy director, Robert. He's been, last time he was in training, and then the time before, I think we were just a little busy, so I was able to bring him today. Other than that, I stand for any questions.
Welcome. Where did you come from?
Texas.
Good. Excuse me, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Yep. Any questions?
I'm good.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you, too.
Good morning, commissioners. Matt Clark, Emergency Services.
Good morning.
For code enforcement for December, 24 solid waste, one illegal dumping, addressed two vehicle issues. It's 17 burn violations, open burning, one unsecured load. And the officers while they were out have picked up five loads of trashes as they're out patrolling, so to speak. We answered 19 fire calls, 15 EMS calls. Did fire inspection on two schools. Believe that was Hy rolls and Yucca down in Chaparral. We turned seven cases over to the courts. We have a total of 43 open cases. One building that's dilapidated. 33 follow-ups, 23 cases were closed, and three fire investigations. Angie Court is still a bench warrant. They issued a bench warrant for 320 Jung Sun. 1029 Mike Court, the warrant is still active. We opened up 4409 North Florida, posted the notice. That one's going to end up in court. We haven't gotten any compliance from him. Tractor Road, he is still submitting his receipts. Bench warrant was issued statewide for 53 Almaturo. A new case was opened December 23rd, a two-week letter mailed and posted on the property. We did have our contractor go in and look to see if we could remove the building with the cars the way they're at. And they're not comfortable with that because suddenly the $10 Cadillac turned into a multimillion-dollar Porsche, so. He's just not comfortable tearing that building down, so we have to solve the vehicles first, and then we can address the building. 15 First Street, a letter was returned, posted the notice on the property, and they're supposed to be addressing it this week. 23 Desert Star, a warrant was issued. He goes to court January 15th. Still no update from the EPA. 21 Quail Trail, court date was rescheduled. With the volunteers, the last couple of months, they've been switching over their reporting system. The National Fire Incident System, it goes dark this, I think it's the end of this month, so they're going into the new system. We had a lot of issues trying to get all our reports from the way they were currently doing it into the new system, and we're finally a lot closer, so I actually have better numbers than I've had before. For December, they responded to fifteen fire calls, 125 medical calls, fifteen no emergency founds of false alarm type, eleven public service requests, three vehicle accident rescues. Still trying to figure out how to, all of that is new. So, the medical versus why is that not in an MVA? We're trying to get that figured out and do more standardization, the best that we can with the tools that they gave us. And they responded to thirteen, what was considered a hazardous situation. I just don't have all the details on that. Again, we're trying to come up with a way so that all the data makes better sense to all of us. But the new program is a lot better. It'll offer us a lot more. We can actually start looking at hotspots. We can look at call times, where, what's our busiest time day of week, stuff like that. Kind of excited to get this new program going and fully get some better data in it, so. So, they did a total of 183 calls for December. Overall, with all the districts, they, for the year, increased two people. There's a lot of ups, downs. People realize it's not for them. Do have a lot that are military, so they PCS in, PCS out, so.
We gotta get... I will, too, but we gotta get some sort of incentive program, some sort of, I mean, youth internship, I mean, something, we've gotta get going. So, we're not forced for paid. I mean, that's what's gonna happen.
And with that, I stand for questions.
Matt, the, the house down on Luna in Chaparral that you're trying to get the approval for, I guess, have it removed or burned or whatever you're gonna do?
Okay.
David, wasn't that the house that we were having all the shooting? The address, I was trying to find the address on it. The address sounded really familiar, that we were having all the reports on the shooting and then the, all the trash and stuff outside of it. Do you remember?
I don't remember for sure. I think you'll pull it up right quick to call for sure.
It'd be nice to get rid of that if that's the same one, like I think it is. I don't know why I can't find that now.
904 Luna?
You what?
904 Luna?
Yes.
That's on the resolution for dilapidation.
Right, and it was, but I, that address sounds really familiar for the one that we were having shootings, reported shootings out there a bunch, and then a bunch of trash all around it that the rats and mice were hanging out in. I don't, is that the same one, do you know?
I don't know if it's the same one, but that's, that's the one we have of dilapidated building. I'll, I'll get with Judy and ask her if that's the one, and we'll definitely look at, if it's not, we'll look at that one as well.
Okay.
The state law for being qualified as a dismantler is having three or more dilapidated cars on your property.
But I don't know.
How can we not enforce the state law? On a property where there's junk cars to remove them so that we can declare this, or get to this house as blight?
I'll have to look. I'm not familiar with it off the top of my head.
In Chapter 18?
It, it sounds like it's another avenue that can be utilized depending on the circumstances.
Yep, and if, I mean, if we have to, let's get, if it takes state police to start that, then let's get state police on that. But if these are blocking us from cleaning up that neighborhood, then let's do it.
This is just specific to?
Oh, Alamotero.
Where there's a bunch of junk vehicles?
Right.
Cody, what kind of letter did we send to the house on First Street in Bolz Acres? I mean, it's, a guy ought to have a whole stack of letters. Is this a hi, how you doing?
It's our, it's our violation letter, our standard violation letter, giving them fifteen to thirty days' notice to get it cleaned up. Probably a thirty-day letter that they sent, maybe a fifteen, I'm not sure on the number of days, but it's our violation letter by the, how's things going?
Okay, so this is the start of the right process to get it back in court again?
Yes.
Okay. And then I know, I think this is on the agenda for later, but, you know, the easement for those junk cars on Alamotero is still an issue. How, when they're parked illegally, can we get them moved?
That's, that's not a code enforcement. That's law enforcement. That's law enforcement. I think it was called on that recently.
And then Mayflower, seems like we have a, that same person jumped, dumped that trash on the road, and then the sheriff deputy just pushed it into the ditch. Did we get that cleaned up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We went through the cops looking for any identifiers, and there wasn't any identifiers.
I mean, do we still have the identifiers from the first bag?
I don't know about the first.
Okay, it was the same, I know.
Yeah, without seeing it, I wouldn't be able to pursue that.
Okay. Because I think we're gonna get calls on that more if they continue. I think that's all I have.
That was it, I just wanted to check on First Street again.
Thank you. Thank you for getting on that Mayflower, too.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, Tom Porter, Otero County Road Department.
Good morning.
So, for the month of December, we got twenty-fives, Chippewa projects closed out, all the paperwork turned into the state for payment. General maintenance, clean repair cattle guards throughout the Mesa and some up on the mountains. Generated a bunch of material in our borrow pit over in Timberon, some of the roads over in there, hauled onto Taylor Ranch Road and Capel de Flor, the one we looked at the other day. E-506, G-506, did a lot of repair work on that from the flooding we've had, along with a bunch of the other roads out on the Mesa. Next week, Matt and I have a scheduled meeting with FEMA. We're gonna spend three days driving the entire damaged areas. Patched throughout the county, a lot of patching and blow sand cleanup down in Chaparral. Those two guys are running around like crazy trying to keep up with everything down there. Brush trimming and mowing throughout the county. We had one snowstorm we responded to in December, which makes it kinda scary. We're really dry up there. The storm didn't dump near as much as we were hoping it was going to. And that's all I've got.
You ever found a replacement for your third person down there?
I'm gonna bring it before the commission next month. I missed the deadline, sorry Sylvia, to get it on the agenda this month. I have a person that applied down there with non-CDL. I want to get it changed to a labor operator, one of the positions down there, and I'll get your approval on that next month. We had one great applicant for that down there.
Good, good. One-way sign, no turning left out of leather and lace.
Talked to the NMDOT about it, and they said they'd look into it.
Okay, and we gotta get on that, because every Saturday, we have an elderly person that turns left right there and goes down the highway on the wrong side. I mean, we've, we've got to get on that.
Yep. Try calling Francisco.
I don't want to wait for an accident.
Yeah.
Why did you come out of that, they're turning left on the highway?
Because the fence is right there, so they think it's just a two-lane road and they're turning left.
Yeah. That's not a good deal.
No, that's not a good deal, so. I think that's all I have. Thank you for going to Bent and enduring.
Yeah, not a problem.
That's part, that, that was easy breezy for me compared to everything else I do.
Thanks for all the chip ceiling.
So, we did go up the next day and looked at that. I've got Jim going to get locates called in today to put the speed limit signs up on Round Mountain Road. The culvert at God's Ranch, there's nothing wrong with that culvert. We went in last year and cleaned the shoulder ditch up on that, and we weren't gone an hour, and the neighbors told us they filled that ditch in so they could get their little, you ride a lawnmower through there to go get hay out of their barn. So, if they've got flooding in their house, it's gonna be on them.
Is that on the Lollus Road?
No, this is on Dogal Canyon.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners, Trent Parker, Project Manager.
Good morning.
We are still currently waiting on the fully signed agreements to come back for the chin's roof replacement, but we've got, got everything in motion, ready to go as soon as we get those agreements. The Flickin' Center brick veneer improvements, this month, they, the contractor did start, they stripped the brick damaged veneer off the back of the building. They went in with the skim coat to, to, as a base for the new insulation and EFS system. They've also been working on the new parapet caps to prevent any further water intrusion around the perimeter of the building. And then on Monday, January 12th, we'll start on the inside, working and repairing the damaged plaster ceiling on the inside, so. We're looking to be finished probably the last week of January, which is a little bit ahead of our original schedule, so.
That's good.
It's going great. Alamo West Fire and Rescue, we're about to wrap up those water storage tank projects. The pump houses and the pumps were installed this month, and we're just, we're working on getting the electrical over there for lighting and just power, general power in the, within the building. Same for Bolz Acres. The Otero County District Courthouse, the contractor is going back in, reevaluating the maximum allowed cost. We should be seeing that by the end of the month, and once we get it, that maximum allowed cost agreed upon, we'll be able to, to start the project and start working on civils. Bent and Twin Forks flood improvements, those projects, the designs are about 60% done. Tom's planning on applying for funding for those so that we can go into construction and, and start working on those projects. Excuse me. Railroad Avenue Bridge, they're about 50% complete on design on that, and so then we'll be able to, to go after funding for that, that bridge project. Jack Rabbit's Flat Fire Department, they're stationed, too. We're working on getting a purchase order sent out to the contractor. We've got price to install some water storage tanks out there and tie them into the existing well for, for that department. Hy rolls Fire Department, we went into the main station and Haynes Canyon Station and installed some retaining walls to make approaches a little safer coming in and out of, in and out of those buildings, especially Haynes Canyon, they, they get a lot of traffic.
Yeah, they do.
Flying down that road.
I know it.
And so, it was pretty dangerous. Demo projects this last month, we demoed 25 White Oaks in Lollus and 1668 Main Street in Oregrande, and the contractor did a really good job on those projects. The Shooting Range Improvement Grant, this last month, we completed the 200-yard range canopy and the 50-yard range canopy, and along with all the new concrete handicap parking spaces. And all, all we have left to finish up this month is three 20-by-20 shade structures up by the new bays and over by the new archery area. Law enforcement, Chaparral Law Enforcement Facility, we still have not received any agreements, legislative agreements for those projects, so we're still anticipating getting those so that we can get that project started. Cloud Country West and Upper Cox, those are complete, other than I'm waiting to hear back from the department to schedule a training for, for them to test the pumps and test the whole system to make sure that it's all operable up to standard. The Animal Shelter Grant, we received a $400,000 grant to expand additional kennels. I'll be getting with Loretta this month to start working on and getting that ball rolling. Oregrande Fire Department, we have a contractor down there working on some improvements, doing some insulating, kind of sealing up the building to keep birds and all kinds of stuff out. It needed some attention. The 16 Springs Plaque, ended up reaching out to a company in Albuquerque. We're working on getting that going so that we can get that plaque completed. Administration Building Historical Assessment Plan, we'll be scheduling site visits with the architects and consultants this month to come in and start looking at the building and get that assessment completed so that we can go after funding for improvements. Oregvista Station, too, they received a grant, which is on the consent agenda today to accept, and we're working on to build a new four-bay building up there for, for additional truck bays. And Tom with the road shop, he's, we didn't get our full funding, so he's assisting and he's building the dirt pad for us, which will save us roughly about $60,000. And it keeps us in budget on the, on the rest of the building and everything else, so we'll still be able to complete the project. Other than that, working on a few budget pricings and stuff like that for upcoming budget sessions, but other than that, that's about it.
The courthouse?
The courthouse, we're, it's kinda in the hands of the contractor right now. They're reevaluating all the value engineering and reductions that we did to the, to the building, and we're just waiting on them to finish that estimate so that we can agree on a maximum, maximum allowed cost.
You said that we're still waiting on Mr. Walker's plaque for 16 Springs? What are we waiting on?
Well, I attempted to, to work locally with DH Stamp here on New York Street and just kept hitting roadblocks and hitting walls, and so I finally had to shift gears and reach out to a plaque company out of town, so.
What if we do a stone instead? Do those hold up?
I think so.
And we can go local doing it that way?
We could entertain that and look at that, see what the price comparison is.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be pretty.
Just we can get it done. I mean, we're, what, four months into this? The government, whoever sees us to amaze me.
Something so simple being complicated.
Yeah, exactly.
Did you get ahold of John Green about the corner of his property?
No, I have not.
Okay, I'd like to have that done next couple of months.
Okay.
Okay, and then will you be the one that oversees the fence that's gonna go to the Arroyo by the convenience center?
Actually, met with Ralph and took a contractor out there yesterday to get a good budget number for that project.
Okay.
Looking at it and looking at the property survey, it's about 3,425 feet of fence, so it's, it's not gonna be real cheap, but it would be effective. There's, walking that property, there is trash everywhere, there's vehicle tracks everywhere, it's, it's crazy.
Is that just on the Arroyo side, or is that on the Arroyo side and the east side?
I thought we were just putting the gate, so they couldn't drive in there anymore.
No, we've got a fence, there's somewhat of a barbed wire fence there that they're just driving through, cutting it, drive, just acting like the fence is not even there.
Please keep in mind that the people that use, that do use that Arroyo, they need to have the turning radius when you do put that gate in there.
Right. What we, what they're pricing for us is over by the What we, what they're pricing for us is over by the convenience center is double twenty-foot gates and then going into their Arroyo, the same thing on the access route.
Okay.
You're talking about getting the, the.
The truck, the tractor trucks.
Materials out of that Arroyo?
Yeah, yeah, they need to make sure they have that turning radius. If we put that gate out too far, then they won't be able to turn.
Right, right, no. We, we've got that in the plan.
Okay, good, thank you. And, that's all I have.
So, is that just a security fencing or is that a trash retaining tall fence?
Kind of both. We're, what I'm having them propose, because on past projects, there's not a lot of difference between a six-foot chain length and an eight-foot chain length fence as far as cost. The eight-foot is far more effective, in my opinion, of catching any flying debris and keeping people out. And so, I'm having them propose an eight-foot chain length.
Okay.
Be good.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Trent.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nina, Sister Correctional Services Director. For the month of December, our average daily population was a hundred and fifty-four. Today's in-house population was a hundred and thirty-one. We had a hundred and ten males, twenty-one females. I have four out of Otero prison, four treatment furloughs, three out of county courts, two just regular furloughs and one in Lincoln County. As far as juveniles, I have two, one in Lee County and one in Burnaleo. As far as, excuse me, in-house video courts, we had sixty-eight with municipal, a hundred and thirty-five with magistrate, a hundred with district. Out of county courts, we had nine. Tulare Rosa Courts, two. In-person courts, we had ten with magistrate, fifteen with district. As far as vacancies, we have seven full-time detention officer vacancies. I had one that started on the sixth that was a previous staff that returned, left on good terms and came back. And so, it's almost done with orientation, so should start. As far as training, all the staff are working on their defensive driving and have started their annual training. As far as tra, other transports, we had three males transported to the Central New Mexico Correctional Facility in Las Lunas. One female transferred, transported to Western Women's Correctional Facility in Grants. One was transported for treatment to the Salvation Army and five transported for treatment to the Darren's Place Treatment Center. Other events, we got caught up Employee of the Month. Our November Employee of the Month was Corporal Joseph Argus and for December, it was Corporal Ricardo Badazas. And on December sixteenth, we did the ribbon cutting for our micro-market for the staff at the facility and it's actually really doing well. So, I mean, especially they're there, I mean, you have twelve-hour shifts there on site and so it's, it's already, they're stocking it every other day, I think, so.
Good.
It's really doing well. And that's it.
So, if I remember correctly, we quit the advertising deal that was with, that was on TV with Burnaleo and Belen in Albuquerque and it had a, or, did we benefit out of that at all? I mean, was it worthwhile is what I'm asking. Do I still see the advertisements on TV? So, it's still catching my eye, but.
Recently, we haven't, we haven't received any applicants, applications at all, zero. So, yeah, we're kind of on a standstill. It seemed to, a little bit when we were doing the sign-on bonuses and things like that, a little bit, and referral bonuses, but it's kind of dwindled and kind of at a standstill right now. I think the one that just started, I mean, he previously worked there and he enjoyed it, he had leave for other reasons and then now he returned, but we haven't had any other applicants recently, so.
Is there any other programs out there now that are trying to do, work with, trying new hires and, and stuff that we can?
We've been participating in a lot of, when they, we, we know about and we've been going to the job there, we're going to the high school next, I know it's a high school, but the career day and trying to get out there to, you know, it's, some people just, I've had people resign with less than a week because it's just not for them working in a detention center. It's a different environment. So, it's kind of, right now, we're at a standstill, kind of. So, hopefully, high hopes. When they do come, normally we get numerous applicants at one time, but I know the six of the previous were really, their backgrounds were pretty poor as far as criminal history, so.
So, Kipotaro County Beautiful is gonna have a cleanup on February twenty-first? Do you have any inmates that will qualify?
I may have inmates, but I don't have staff. I'll have to do overtime to see if they'll even volunteer for something like that. I don't have someone to supervise them. The shifts are pretty, you know, short, so.
Having a really hard time trying to get people to come and participate. If we could get five people, that would be, six people, that would be great if we could.
As far as inmates?
Yeah.
I might be able to get three. Charges are big.
Three better than none.
I will, we can look through the log and definitely get criminal charges because I don't want everybody to be safe, of course, but we have a lot of high offenders right now, but, and to see if any staff will volunteer. Not volunteer, but, you know, do overtime to monitor them because they have to be monitored.
Right. Okay, just can't keep that in your mind, think about it.
And it was the twenty-first, you said?
Twenty-first February.
Okay, got it.
And it's gonna be on the relief route, right?
Yes.
How are your repairs going? The problems you're having in the new part of the building?
We're, they're slowly resolving. We've got some plumbing issues on the old portion now, so some of the drains, but, I mean, it's, what, nineteen ninety-eight? So, it's gonna be, to be expected, so, but it's just plumbing chases and certain things on the old part are coming up recently, so been having to, I mean, our maintenance does try to resolve it in-house first and when they can't, then they, we call that plumber because we don't want to damage anything in there either, right, so.
I attended almost all of the behavioral health community listening sessions that just got completed and by listening to the community input, I've kind of made my broad idea a little bit narrowed. What do you think would be most beneficial if we had a mental illness facility to send somebody to or recovery center to send somebody to?
I would think, I think that's fabulous. I mean, a lot, in my career, working there, the mental health has increased severely. And I think that while our recent, the ones that do come to jail are homeless and it is, a lot of them have some serious diagnosis and just aren't on medications and aren't stable and maybe lack housing or family ties in the community and they do need a lot of assistance. I know that the district court has the mental health competency program and they have some navigators out there and that's, can be beneficial trying to get them there, but some of them are at a point that they probably need more, you know. I think both of them are actually, I mean, I advocate, I mean, the detention officers, I mean, we do have mental health every day, you know, we have a long call for crisis at the facility. However, the detention officers are your front, front line that deal with them, that aren't, you know, trained to, to the level of a professional that to handle some of the situations that may arise or symptoms or is it substance abuse and mental health or what is it, you know, and so it's difficult, it's a difficult challenge all the way around. We do work with the mental health and they, with our medical contract company in mental health. We do go get the higher-ups involved when we have a very, someone that's not gonna go anywhere due to the high level of criminal charge and we try to, try to keep them safe and everybody else safe in the facility and we have special meetings trying to do treatment plans that benefit the individual while they're pending, you know, going to whatever their judicial process is gonna be.
So, do you think this is caused by drug abuse? That the mental illness is from overuse of drugs? Is it something that we should nip in the butt from recovery or do you think it's something that should be addressed at the mental illness phase?
I think it's both, but I think substance abuse is a high, definitely involved. You know, because they mix the drugs out there and then some of them end up having psychosis due to substance abuse and it's awful. And we do put them detoxing in the facility and things like that. Of course, we have twenty-four-seven medical, but it is an issue.
I'm attending about a seven-hour work session tomorrow, which I think has to do with the diversion program and all of that. So, I think in the future, I'm gonna see if you can go to those meetings too, just so we can, as this all starts to become one.
Right.
We real, I think it's really important that we have your input on the table.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mark Finnickoff, Slinka National Forest.
Good morning.
The annual Fire Academy is in session this week in Ruidoso. It offers a number of courses and all of these sessions increase firefighter proficiency and advanced individual qualifications. Such kind of a big training event each year we have. The next one's the Southwest Engine Academy. It'll be held in Glendale, Arizona this year. And the Lincoln will provide three engines, a few instructors and four student firefighters. So, these folks are each assistant engine captain, so this will advance their qualification so they can actually be an engine captain anywhere in the agency. The fire danger on the Lincoln was elevated to moderate, but there are no forest-wide restrictions yet. If, the upcoming three-month average is predicted to be drier and warmer over the next several weeks, so, you know, it could increase to high, but don't anticipate any forest-wide restrictions anytime soon. We're still waiting on a suitable weather window to resume prescribed fire operations on Sacramento and Smokey Bear District, so hopefully we'll get that started again toward the end of the month after all the training cycles. The closure order for Bluff Springs day use area was extended another year and we're awaiting resources to really redesign and repair that area. So, we have two timber sales that are prepared for advertisement. It's part of the South Sacramento Restoration Project and I expect those to be out in the next probably two months. So, the good news, in November and December, the, the Lincoln sold two-hundred-and-seventy-nine Christmas tree permits to local citizens and additionally, we sold a hundred and five fuel wood permits. So, the Christmas tree permits this year, we entered a online system so that people don't have to come to the ranger station to get a permit and we're working on the same electronic system for fuel wood permits. Hopefully, that'll get done before the next year. And that's all I know.
The Bluff Springs deal, the extension on the year, is that because of the damage that was done or is this another project that you were?
It's because of some damage. It's mostly from erosion, but the biggest problem is that the bridge that leads to the trail in the spring, it was classified by Forest Service Engineers as unsafe, so it had to be closed. Needs repair, in other words, a replacement.
I just didn't know if this was from the side-by-side abuse that went on up there or?
Not really.
No, okay.
That area's pretty popular and as you know, it gets a lot of use. It's kind of overloaded in a sense.
The Big Beautiful Bill allows for local government agencies to have local control and cleanup and management of forest departments. What is that looking like? What kind of rules are being implemented and how is the forest department gonna be working with the local municipalities?
I think the most important thing we're working on right now with the State Forest of Laura is, it's something like a good neighbor agreement, so, I can't think of the name, but it's basically agreement with the state and what they propose is to have a hundred thousand acres that they can work on projects. So, the state Fish and Game and Forestry are contributing quite a lot of money to, to help us out with the South Sacramento Restoration Project and they're interested in others. You know, because of the fires around Ruidoso, there's a lot of interest in wildlife urban interface around Ruidoso Downs and also one between Mescolero and Forest Service to help protect the city, so we're working on those two. So, you know, that's kind of on a fast track. That agreement right now, I expect it'll be done within the next two months.
I know Montana's entering in those stewardship contracts with the Forest Service and it's to help with forest restoration and to help maybe clean up some for the grazing and stuff, so we're gonna be working on that also.
Great. Let me know if I can help.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we're gonna pull number nine for discussion, number thirteen and number fourteen for discussion. So, I'll start with number one, request approval of accounts payable bills list BL-21, 22, 23, 23A, 24, 25 and 25A. Number two, request approval of November twelfth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Number three, request approval of December fifth, twenty-twenty-five special meeting minutes. Number four, request approval of December ninth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Number five, request approval of resolution number one dash zero eight dash twenty-six slash one fourteen dash thirty-five, a resolution finding nine oh four Luna Chaparral, New Mexico is a public nuisance requiring renovation or removal by county. Number six, request approval of resolution zero one dash zero eight slash, uh, dash twenty-six slash one fourteen dash thirty-six budget adjustments, January twenty-twenty-six. Number seven, request approval of resolution zero one dash zero eight dash twenty-six slash one fourteen dash thirty-eight, annual fees for animal control. Number eight, request approval of resolution zero one dash zero eight dash twenty-six slash one fourteen dash thirty-nine, a resolution designing FY-26 general fund purposes for county lodgers tax. Skipping nine, we'll go to ten, request approval of a grant agreement between Otero County and the New Mexico Department of Agriculture in the amount of fifty-two thousand one hundred and forty dollars for noxious weed management. Number eleven, request approval of an agreement between Otero County and Management Associates Incorporated for assistance and advice regarding labor relations. Number twelve, request approval of an agreement between Operational Consultants in Otero County in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Skipping thirteen and fourteen, number fifteen, request approval to accept awarded volunteer fire assistance grant for District One for forty-three, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, four, four hundred, thirty-three, three hundred thousand dollars, District Six for three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, District Seven for six hundred thousand dollars and District Nine for seventeen thousand two hundred dollars. Number sixteen, request approval to purchase a new apparatus for Sidens Martin for District Eight in the amount of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Number seventeen, request approval to purchase a new apparatus for MES for District Three in the amount of six hundred and ninety-nine thousand fifty dollars. And number eighteen, request approval to appoint Brad Nichols to one of the two Otero County member open seats on the Almagorda Library Board. Let me get a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll move on to number nine for discussion, request approval of resolution zero one dash zero eight dash twenty-six slash one fourteen dash forty-one, twenty-twenty-six compliance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act.
The only, there it is right there. The only reason why I wanted to discuss this is if, why don't we add in there when we have a possibility of attending the same meeting without knowing that it could be a quorum, but we're not discussing county business? Why can't we add that in there too?
Like a, when we advertise a possible?
Like if we all go to the mall at the same time or we all go to the Legislative Prayer Breakfast tomorrow at the same time, that kind of stuff? Why, why can't we put that in here too?
I don't know if it's necessary, is it?
The rule is if we know that ahead of time is potentially gonna happen, then we just post a notice. I don't, I'm not sure I understand, um, the question, like what?
Well, if we all show up at the same time and we don't know we're all going and we just happen to all be there?
Just, we could do one after the fact, but I mean, you just, um, it understands you can't talk business.
Right. I thought last year we put on the website kind of a blanket statement in the event of we all go to Rotary, we all go to something.
Not that I recall. No.
Okay.
Will it be okay?
Yeah, 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 it's just, I mean, just the rule is you end up somewhere together, don't talk business.
Right, well, yeah, right.
It's going to happen because it's kinda small.
Right.
Yeah, it always happens.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know if we could add that or not.
Okay.
That's all.
Alright, so you wanna make a motion?
I will make a motion to accept resolution 01-08-26/114-41, the compliance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, number 13, request approval of a solid waste agreement between Otero County and the Village of Tularosa. Tularosa shall pay $2.25 per mile at 62 miles per trip for a total of $139.50 per trip.
And this actually is not my item, this would be Ralph. He's here.
The only reason why I was questioning this is because it doesn't look like we went up on their rates. I mean, should we because of inflation?
Okay, Ralph Murphy, Solid Waste Department. Back in the day, when we first initially signed this agreement, Tularosa's garbage trucks were in bad shape. And in the interim, now they have gone ahead and purchased new trucks. So they no longer actually dump with us, you know, because they were having trouble just making it to the landfill. So they would dump with us and then we would charge them a fee to bring their trash to the landfill and, but that has kinda gone by the wayside now that they have new trucks. But I'd still like to keep the agreement open because there will be instances where they break down and they still need to operate and this would be another avenue for them to still stay operational. Without having to waste the distance going to the landfill. The fee was established back then by what the fee was for DOT, you know, for running and ensuring a semi truck.
Which is obviously more than $2.25.
Now, yes.
So should we increase that rate?
I would have to see what the current rate would be and then we could bring this back and increase the rate.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, all of this costs a lot of money to the county, so I would, I would be agreeable to that.
Okay.
So we can just table this until?
Next month?
Next month. Now I have a figure for you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, number 14, request approval of a purchase agreement between AirDNA and Otero County Assessor's Office in the amount of $4,800 per year.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, yes, so one thing that we are getting ready for this year is identifying short-term rentals in the county in the areas that are approved, because I know that it was, like as far as lodgers tax, it was not approved by the city, but for the county and everything that, we know that that has been approved. So with this software, AirDNA, what their job is to do is to basically help identify which residential structures are actually being used as Airbnbs, VRBOs and other short-term rental entities throughout the county and throughout the country. For my office, the purpose of this will be kind of important for us because we have to go through and decide whether or not we're going to be classifying short-term rentals per being a non-residential rate or a residential tax rate. There are different parameters that will qualify them to be one or the other. Our, our office, we deal with what's called highest and best use. So if someone has a rental property that they list 365 days a year and they rent it out, you know, however many days, you know, 100 days, the highest and best use for that property is it's a short-term rental. There are some people that have properties where they only rent it out on the weekends, but they live there throughout the rest of the week. And if someone books their place, then, you know, they'll move out for the weekend. And I know one person that actually moves into a camper for the weekend and they just rent their house out for the weekend. So in that kind of instance, the highest and best use is a residential structure. So we would leave that as a residential rate. So with this company, they would be able to help us identify those a little bit more because they register with them. I'm not sure how familiar you are with like Airbnbs and VRBOs, but you don't get the actual location of it until usually about 24, sometimes 48 hours before your actual stay. So, you know, we could drive around and look for needles and haystacks all day, but that would just waste time. So with this software, with your approval, this would help us eliminate that portion of it, of the kind of like guessing game. And it would just help us to identify them a little bit easier for the county and then we can start preparing the next step for collecting on lodgers tax and things like that. So, yeah, so we looked for three different companies. I was really fond of a company called Deckard Technologies for a long time. But when I was looking for my third one, I found AirDNA and they were a fraction of the cost and they did exactly everything that we needed still too, so I was like, never mind, I want these ones instead. And then there was a third one called Avenue Insight, which they had a lot of good qualities to their, their program and everything too, but I just, again, for cost effectiveness and things like that, I just felt like AirDNA was the best choice for us in the county. So, yeah, that's where we are with that.
So, um, good, thank you for that explanation. Because I was thinking 100% lodgers tax when I read this, not assessor.
Right.
I wasn't, didn't have the assessor brain on there.
Right.
But that being said, this comes out of 100% for your budget. How is the treasurer gonna be able to utilize this for collection?
So for them, what we will end up doing is we will generate reports for them to let them know, like, here are the properties that are eligible for lodgers tax and things like that. So we'll keep an ongoing list for them and basically get that, that information to them and then they can basically send out whatever letters they need to send out for collection and things like that. And then realistically, like, they don't, I've, I've had a couple conversations with Carl about it, like, they won't need to do much else because we do all the legwork for it. Like, we find them, we identify them, we value them, and then it's just like, here's the information and you do with it as you may. And then we go from there. So, yeah, that's why I'm willing to front the whole bill because the majority of it is for us. Like, we need it, even if we weren't collecting lodgers tax, it just helps us for proper identification of the parcels and things like that.
And what do you expect if the tax value is gonna go up?
That's kind of a hard question to answer with all the exemptions coming in this year with veterans and things like that. So it's, it's, it's a difficult question to answer and even the whole lodgers tax thing is also kind of difficult to answer because, like, if you take the Village of Cloudcroft, for instance, they, when you have Airbnb or any type of short-term rental, you register with them and they're going to be taking out a percentage of taxes there too. So I feel like it's gonna be kinda interesting to see how many people are, how do I say, being accurate with their information that they're giving us. I, I can't tell you like, hey, we're gonna collect on $250,000 more on taxes, I, because I don't truly feel that way right now. It will be more, we will get some, but with this being the first year trying it and everything, I don't expect it to be like a crazy insurmountable, you know, number that we, you know, we're trying to get to, we might not be able to get there. But I just feel like after this first year, and that's the other thing about AirDNA that's actually kinda nice, is they can go year to year with us. And if we decide, like, after this first year, hey, this all worked out well, we got the information we needed, they're willing to do some things where we can lock in for a longer term and give us a little bit of a discount on the actual price of it too. So I think this first year is just gonna be kinda like trial by fire and see how it goes and we'll see if it's actually, you know, beneficial for, you know, collection purposes and everything like that for the county. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be different, but we're, we're, we're definitely willing to get the information that we need to see how it's gonna work, for sure.
Will this help with the veterans exemptions? Will that help you with that? Because I know that's gonna be a, a big task.
Um, there's, so, yeah, there's, there's, there's a couple things that we're working on for that. So with the veterans exemptions, it's going to be a challenge. We know that throughout the state. We have certain things that we've been implementing and getting ready for as far as like our camera system with Tyler and everything to make sure that we can properly still assess everybody's evaluations whenever we start getting more of the exemptions than when we start putting them in play now. Of course, you know, we know that we're gonna be losing a little bit when it comes to that, so anything else that we can bring in that's gonna kinda help compensate? Is it gonna balance out? No. Like, we have a lot of exemptions that we're gonna be handing out. I think we are actually the third largest county when it comes to veterans in the state. So we are definitely gonna be having more exemptions than we're gonna be bringing in on the lodgers tax right now. But we're working on some other things too to try to help balance that too, so, which kinda leads me to my other thing. I don't, I didn't hear you say it on, when you opened up, but I'm also looking to try to, I recently had my GIS person.
Yeah, that's further down.
Okay, yeah, so, but yeah, so like with that kinda stuff too, like, there's other things we're working on to try to see if we can help alleviate some of that sting we're gonna feel with the exemptions and things like that for veterans, so, yeah.
Anything we can do to help with that's gonna help because that's gonna be a lot.
Yes, yes, ma'am, for sure.
You're gonna be here for that agenda item, right? Because I have questions for that too.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, for sure. So, but yeah, as far as the short-term rental things, that's basically our request is to try to see if we can get that going and see how we can help out the county with that.
Okay. Okay. I will make a motion to approve the purchase agreement between AirDNA and the Otero County Assessor's Office in the amount of $4,800 per year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, James. Okay, now we will move on to the scheduled citizen communications. Do we have Mitch Hibbard?
He's not here. He might have got snowed.
Maybe. Okay, so we will move on to Rodney Eaton. Gonna provide an update on last year's efforts to keep Otero County beautiful.
Yes, thank you and good morning.
Good morning.
So this last year, which is our first year, we spent some time trying to define really what our function was. And so we began with trying to educate the community, the citizens, on what the ordinances are, what the penalties are to those ordinances. And the schedules of the convenience centers, things like that, trying to help change the culture, if you will. It's hard to measure that, obviously, but we feel like there has been some improvements in that area. We have one, and so first off, this thing breaks down into two, kinda two sections for me. One is the litter on the, on the roadways and the other is private properties, which, you know, we're kind of a, for our advisory board, we're a bark with no teeth, you know? And so the private property side of that is, is complicated, obviously, and so we're focusing now on cleaning up the community as far as litter is concerned. Not taking our eye off the private property issues and, and hopefully trying to encourage movement on that side of it as well. We did have a cleanup on Highway 54, as most of you well know, the last quarter of last year. We have another cleanup coming up on the bypass February 21st. We're gonna try to do the entire bypass if we can, which is about eight miles. And so we're reaching out to those who have adopted part of that and asking them to participate with us on that particular day. And so we're gonna try to do one of these cleanups a quarter. And after we get the bypass done, then we'll, we'll probably start at 8:02 and work north towards Tularosa for the next cleanup. And I can tell you that people don't really enjoy picking up another man's trash, but they do it out of a sense of community, sense of betterment to life as we know it here in Otero County, of responsibility as citizens, I guess. So, but I feel like if we're not all pulling that dump trailer in the same direction at the same time, then two months after we do this cleanup on the bypass, it's gonna be not back to where it is now, because right now it's pretty bad, but it will be bad again. And so if we don't start enforcing the bag your trash and secure your loads concept, which I feel is 70% of our issue, then I don't wanna say we're wasting our time, but we are spinning our wheels a little bit as far as volunteers are concerned. So, and I'm not saying that code enforcement, law enforcement, those folks are not doing their jobs because they are, but if we want to make a difference in the trash area of our county, we've gotta put that a little higher on the priority list to get things done. We, as a board, are willing to work at anything. We'll put it together, we'll push it, we'll market it, we'll do everything we can to make it happen, but it's not gonna happen with volunteers alone.
Is there a grant available that we could apply for to put signs on roads? Tarp your load, something like that to create more awareness that we're gonna?
As far as litter type signs, fines, things of that nature?
Yeah, yeah. You see that on the state highway signs?
Yeah.
Littering $500 fine or something? Can we put that on our roads? Tarp your load, such and such fine?
I get that, Commissioner Brela, but if we're not pulling those people over, what's the point?
Well, I was hoping just the education of people that we're gonna, that we have that ordinance and have that ability would?
But, but the issue we have is we're not enforcing them. We have ordinances on the books that are well-written, I believe, but we're not enforcing them. And if we're not gonna enforce them, then what's the education for? You know, if we're not all pulling in the same direction at the same time, then we're wasting our time.
So, a question I have for David and Ralph to Amy's question right there. Are we enforcing coming into the convenience center, the unsecure, or at least trying to educate them? And are any of our deputies writing any citations for unsecure loads? Because that is state law.
I know for the unsecure loads, very few. My guys are bouncing call to call to call all of the, well, Tony Poole, etc., just about. I mean, we, we got guys writing reports at home because they don't have time to do it. Like, if we wanna, if we wanna increase that, you know, you probably don't wanna hear this, but give me 20 deputies and about $5 million in my budget and we can make it happen.
But this is, this is still a law though, David, and it's still, here, here, there's a group trying to clean it up, but, I mean, I don't mean just patrol and just strictly just give tickets, but those guys, when they pass somebody driving down the bypass or something, I mean, they write speeding tickets, write a unsecure load ticket. I mean, it, I, all you gotta do is write a few and the word'll get around town and it'll happen. I don't wanna shut them off from the convenience center because I know where that load goes in, right up to the ditch or up the road and out in the Arroyo. But if we can, I mean, we have to participate and help a little bit. This is a countywide, this is a countywide thing we're trying to do. And if the county won't participate in it, well, then they're just wasting their time. I mean, this should be a deal, everybody gripes about Otero- Uh, I mean, this should be a deal, everybody gripes about Otero County's trashy, filthy. If, if Otero County alone, the departments say, hey, they're having a deal for two hours out here on February twenty-first, let's go out and help. Let's go out and try to pick up something. Uh, we got two hundred and something employees here. Boy, that'd be great to have fifty show up, you know? The only two county employees that showed up on the last one was Commissioner Burrella and myself. I mean, I, you're right, I didn't wanna pick up somebody else's trash, but I stayed in one spot in that, uh, that Colbert right there across from that express, J and J or whatever you wanna call it, for an hour picking up pants, tents, sleeping bags, you name it. It was, it was unreal. But why can't the county help? Why can't we try to make? If, if we show a lot of people out there, then more people will come. Uh, that's all I got, you know? It's just, we could, we could help. Also, the last time, my understanding, and I could be wrong on this, was Bill Farmer was supposed to get us a, a dump trailer and stuff and have us for another dump deal. Never saw that. Rod had his trailer. But it's just, we all gotta pitch in here. I mean, this is, I mean, I don't think you should expect to get paid for two hours to go out there, but this should be something you wanna make your county look better. I don't know. Maybe I look at it different, so.
Well, we're all for, you know, just to keep moving on and, and trying to make it an effort and a difference, you know, because it affects economic development, it affects tourism, it affects so many things, and yet it is so far down the line on priority lists that nobody even can see it, you know? And so, but it, but it's an impact to us, you know? It reminds me a little bit about, you know, when you were in high school and you were going on a, whether it was a, a football or baseball choir or whatever, and you were going to compete in a different town, they made you dress up because they wanted to show the pride of our community. Well, they also wanted, it's a mindset to some degree. When you're dressed up, you act different. When your community is cleaned up, people will begin to act different. But it's a, it's a slow process. It's a change of culture that we're after. And it's gonna take a while, but it's gonna take everybody making that effort.
We're starting this lodger tax also, and part of that is kinda to promote Otero County and show them, we're gonna promote them to come here and look at trash mattresses, rugs laying out there everywhere. So, I mean, on one hand, we're sitting over here trying to develop a program to promote, but on the other hand, we don't care what it looks like. So, I mean, I'll shut up.
And the county's got amazing assets. They really do. It's a beautiful place. Um, but it looks pretty rough. You know, the bypass right now is probably as bad as I've ever seen it. And it's, you know, we're gonna build teams of six and eight people on this one because there's so much trash out there to pick up. And so, you know, we're looking for anywhere from a hundred and eighty to two hundred volunteers on this to make the whole thing happen. So, it's gonna be an event. Um, we're hoping to get it before the wind starts blowing because it only gets worse after the wind starts blowing, you know how that is. Um, I think in the first of March, we're going to try and, uh, market a campaign for people to simply clean up their own properties. You know, clean up your own fence lines. You clean up your fence line, I clean up mine, then we begin to see a difference, you know? We're gonna try to push that out there and encourage city and county to clean up what is, is theirs. Not anybody else's, just theirs, you know? And, and that doesn't even get us into the dilapidated residents and the cars, you know, the unoperable cars and things like that. That's a, that's a whole nother day, you know, but we, we can't give up on that either, so.
Um, a couple of things. Your March idea, I think if we could get the county to put as many roll-offs around the county areas that we want targeted, so that pub, the public has the ability to dump right there in their neighborhood, that would be great, for the full month of March or something like that. You know, set it right across from, right across the street from Alamo Taro. So that that whole neighborhood use it and, and, um, Bowls Acres and Dog Canyon, just set them out there for those use. And then the county would have to go and dump them daily or something, you know, to keep it from overflowing and people from just dumping it near it. But, you know, that initiative right there, I think, would help with the cleanup. Maybe put a banner, public use, something like that, so they understand what it is. Um, also for the February twenty-first, I would love it if we could create a competition between departments. Volunteer, whoever picks up the most bags gets dinner at La Combe's or something. This department, we will rent this room and you can order wine all day long. I don't, you know, competition, you know, that's, you voluntarily do, but this is between the road shop, this is between the fire departments, this is between the assessor's office, whatever. A competition of who can pick up the most trash to get, you know? And it's not mandatory. If they wanna stay home, then stay home. But I think if we can, can do something to also offer incentives to get people to help. And then the jail program, can we contact the magistrate judges and say, hey, I know that you're assigning people to community service. We have this day right here, we would like for you to assign these people specifically to February twenty-first cleanup.
Sure.
And get our magistrate judges involved. And then can we contact, I've been trying to remember his last name, Captain Jay? What's his last name? Captain Jay with State Police? Blake, yes, yes. Um, to, and since it is a state law and a fine, get our state police officers to also help with the patrol of the loads not being tarped, so that they can pull over people in Otero County that are not tarping.
Yeah. Well, you know, and the bypass is a state highway.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's smack in the center of our community and, you know, part of our problem is our land, our convenience center's on the other side of it. And so, you know, people get up to those highway speeds and, and their trash is not staying in their vehicle, you know, because it's not bagged mostly.
And Amy, the, the dumpster deal, Cody has been very good about spreading, well, in Dog Canyon, Bowls Acres, all those areas about spreading dumpsters out for, trying to get people to clean their. And it's been a successful deal in, in the areas that I've seen. Uh, the problem is they only have, what, four, five dumpsters? One, two?
We have, we have two.
So, what we need to do is get Ralph to buy some new ones and give us our, his old ones. And, uh, to where we can spread them out some more. Uh, you know, I've been up here preaching about showing up and helping, but I can tell you right now, I'm having foot surgery February sixth, so I won't be there the twenty-first, so.
Understandable.
I'll push him, I'll push him around. He can use that little stick.
Yeah, there you go.
Give me a wheelchair or a scooter and a little thing, but, yeah.
So, we're determined not to give up on this because if we do, then what happens next? Nothing. You know, so we'll keep fighting for it, but we, it is not sustainable with volunteers, I can tell you right now. If we don't, if we don't create some kinda county shop program to help this, then we're not gonna be successful. And we're not gonna move the needle. Simple as that.
Can we get notices out to all of the organizations across the county to help promote those organizations too to participate? You know, um, Rotary, the Republican Party, the Democrat Party, all of that too?
And I, you know, and we are working every angle on this marketing that we can because we did have low turnout last time. So, we're trying to up the game on marketing of this one. But that's not the whole answer. The whole answer is sustainable trash cleanup. And that's, that's what we gotta figure out, you know? You know, we've asked code enforcement to randomly sit at the convenience center entryways and check loads, not all day, but randomly, you know, an hour here, an hour there. So, people be, you know, it's kinda like the border station used to be open randomly. No one knew when they could get through there or not, you know? And so it's kinda the same concept. They're never gonna know if code enforcement is there or not to check that load. And, and it's, and that's a perfect way to educate people to, you know, and maybe you don't cite them the first time. You just simply educate them on what it should look like. That, so it's not gonna end up on the ground, you know, so, anyway.
I wonder if we can get with the school board, the survey that asks our kids absolutely ridiculous questions. Add a question, do your mom and dad throw trash out the window? Shame them into it, you know?
I was gonna speak on that, I mean, not the school board part, but like, I can promise you on the twenty-first, I'll have forty people. My, my, I am also the head coach of the basketball team here, and we do a lot of community service. So anytime you need help with anything like that, you can always let me know. I can get my basketball team there for sure. I could probably get you the football team. We'll have a lot of the high school students out there representing. Um, that's one thing that I've taken on as the coaches. We're trying to promote not only the success for our kids on the court, but in the classroom and the community. Um, we did a food drive a couple of weeks ago. We've done a toy drive already. So, we'll do any type of stuff like that. So, I'm gonna-
Be awesome. That's a great idea.
We can do that, cause I'm trying to teach my young kids, you know, how to be responsible. And just like you said, the better we look, the better we perform, all that. So, I can definitely help you out with. I could probably get you about a hundred volunteers on that.
I appreciate that. Do you know Anna Alday?
I'm sorry?
Do you know Anna Alday?
I can, that I do.
Public schools, okay.
I, I know the name, but I can't, I don't know-
She sits on our board, so we'll make sure that you guys have all the information that you need.
Definitely, yeah.
That would be great. Might get the four H kids involved too.
Yes, that'd be great. Yep.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney, for all your work. Okay, Rich Hutchkinson?
God bless you.
That's right.
And I'm very sorry about your role.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'm just following up what, what's going on right here. I almost stood up in the middle of that. Fifty-three Alamo Taro, just one. I really planned on having a notebook with all kinds of stuff going on here. It's getting old. It's getting old. I personally take my pickup and trash cans and walk up and down Alamo Taro and pick up garbage. Fifty-three Alamo Taro, this man's name is Archie. Um, on the, uh, twenty-second of December, I went to Cody, code enforcement officer. There was a Zoom meeting to bring this man to court for these trashy vehicles and stuff right there at fifty-three Alamo Taro. He didn't show up for court, he wasn't on the Zoom thing, a bench warp was issued. So, nothing's gonna get done. Two county commission meetings ago, uh, I was told, sometimes you just gotta take things into your own hands. Things aren't getting done, sometimes you gotta take things into your own hands. I'm not talking about violence or anything, I'm just talking about, I personally pulled some vehicles out into the street. These junky cars that nobody'll do anything about because I was told if they're out in the street. And these are six feet from the center of the road. All I have to do is call the sheriff's department and they will have them towed off. That's a quote from somebody in this room. I did that. I called the sheriff's department. Two hours later, a sheriff shows up, uh, I don't remember what his name was. Anyway, he shows up, he takes pictures, he says, oh my God, you definitely have a problem here. I said, awesome. I thought right then, these vehicles were gonna get hauled off, cause that's what I was told. So, I didn't stick around to wait for the tow truck. I went home, told my wife, honey, the sheriff showed up. They're gonna haul off those junky vehicles, yay! An hour and a half later, I go back to see, see if they're gone yet, and they were pushed back. Now, I don't know if the sheriff, now, the sheriff's vehicle that showed up there had the, you know, they all have the little push thing on them safety, you know, on the bumper to get vehicles out of the road to, you know, keep traffic moving, cause this was the problem. I don't, I asked, and I asked the sheriff, did you guys push them back? He said, no, we didn't. That's not our job. I said, okay. Well, somebody within that, within forty-five minutes of photographs being taken, these vehicles are pushed back. An hour and a half later, sheriff goes out there, the other, there was two on patrol that day. The other sheriff, Mr. Marquez, Officer Marquez, shows up, calls me and said, I don't see a problem. Well, somebody pushed them back. Then he came out, he comes out, and this, the other deputy took photographs. I was right there when he was taking pictures of them. Somebody pushed them back, now nothing's been done, now they don't see a problem anymore. I don't know what we're supposed to do here. Now, I've heard rumor, well, maybe I need to call the state police to, to, uh, have these vehicles removed. But now they're pushed back and they're not, they're actually, the one is right in the easement right now mode. Nobody wants to do anything.
How, how old are these pictures? I'm sup, I'm presuming you submitted them?
Uh, that's a week ago. Yeah, we ju, yeah. That's when the sheriff came in.
Well, these vehicles are actually on the asphalt.
Correct. Correct. And nothing, no, they won't do anything about it. And there's one right now that is only three feet off the asphalt, which is less than twenty feet from the center of the road. They're not gonna do anything about it.
So, the telephone pole marks the easement. The vehicle that is parked between the road and the telephone pole is required to be licensed and insured. Yes, it cannot be left there without being licensed and insured, period. It needs to be towed.
Yeah, and I actually have told, I, I, I would pay out of my pocket to have these vehicles hauled off. I'd put up a thousand dollars of my own money. If I could hire a, a tow company, come out there and just haul all, and that's just two of them. There's nine others on the project right now. I would pay to have, but I can't legally do it because they don't belong to me. Tow companies won't haul them off unless I'm the registered owner. I don't even know if the registered owner is, if, if it's just the renter at fifty-three Alamo Taro or not. I'm telling you, I would pay to do it myself, but I can't legally do it. My hands are tied here. What can we do?
The tow company just needs a tow authorization signed by law enforcement or the county road shop can also do it. Any government entity that is in charge of that can have them towed by a tow auth, by a tow company.
But they didn't.
But they didn't.
I'm, but I'm saying, that's, that's the legalities with a tow company. All we need is a signed tow authorization.
For, who, where would I get that?
By any law enforcement, the county, the state, um-
So, Sheriff Black can give me a piece of paper saying, hey, I want that towed off?
Has to give it to the tow company.
Have, okay. Do I go get that from the sheriff or the-
The sheriff needs to be on scene.
When the tow company shows up?
Call the tow company on rotation.
Okay.
And then they hand the tow company a tow authorization and it's done.
Okay. So, let me make sure I'm clear on this. There's other junky vehicles on this property. I heard earlier in testimonies here that a company was asked to come take that building down, but, ooh, we can't get in there because of these junky vehicles. I will personally pull them out in the street. I will do that. And I, and, and you know, and I'm gonna pull them out in the street and then I'm gonna call people and I'm gonna call a tow company and I'm gonna make this happen. And you know, hey, jail don't scare me. It's three squares, you know? You're not gonna lock me up for trying to clean up my neighborhood. But enough is enough. It's time to clean up this mess.
This guy won't go to jail, but you will. So, that's just the way that works.
I, I have no fear. I, I live here. This is my county. This Rodney guy, I love this guy. We're gonna, we're gonna make out or whatever the hell we gotta do. I love this guy. If I'd have known he was here, we would've talked earlier, you know? I walk up and down Alamo Taro. I pick trash up myself. I've actually seen bags of trash on the road stopped, dug through it, got the address of the people and got the police involved, the sheriffs involved to say, hey, this is their trash. Ain't it a five hundred dollar fine? No, hell no. They're not gonna do nothing. They're just not gonna chase them down. I will, you know?
So, the only, so the law enforcement has authority on the easement.
Okay.
The only authority on private property would be by court order.
Okay.
Okay? Just, just so you know.
So, in the middle of the night, stuff just moves out into the easement? I just jumped, this, this is where we're going and I'm okay letting everybody in this room know I'm done playing tippy-toe around the pigs. It's time to clean up the neighborhood and clean up our bypass and God bless this guy and anybody that wants to help me. Okay? That's pretty much all I got.
Quick question, Mr. Hutchkinson?
Yes, sir.
Say you pulled those vehicles out into the road?
I did.
Yeah. And you, now you want me and my deputy to-
No, no, no.
Pull the vehicles up because you pulled them out the road?
No, no, no. They're already in the evening. They're already in the evening. I made it real obvious.
Right.
I made it real obvious, cause I was told, get them out like that, all they had to do, and I was told, if you can't get anything done, sometimes you gotta take things upon yourself. And that came right out of here two months ago.
That's not right.
And you were present.
That's not right.
I know.
Were you gonna start moving their vehicles?
No, no, no. Just pull them out. I'm just saying. Nothing's gonna get right. And when they, as your sheriffs came out, took pictures and said, wow, this is a problem. I'm just saying, nothing's gonna get done, and when they, as your sheriffs came out, took pictures, and said, wow, this is a problem. Within forty-five minutes, they're pushed back.
Where, where's the easement? Do we have an actual easement marked on that property or?
The telephone pole.
Okay. And has, has it been surveyed? Okay, here's what I'm gonna do, okay? I talked with Mr. Clark a while ago. Mr. Clark's gonna get a survey company out there, and he's gonna survey that, and we're gonna find out where the exact easement is.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
I'm not gonna move anything until I know where that easement is.
Okay.
Okay, a telephone pole?
Okay.
That, that don't mean nothing to me. I, I need to know exactly where that easement is.
I will pay for that easement.
I've got Lieutenant Garza. Yesterday, we, we worked on this, I was hoping to have a report to give to you today, or to give to the commission on this. Um, a, a lot of times when you go to move in vehicles and stuff like that, who's gonna get sued? We are, okay, I'm gonna get sued.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna give you trouble, brother.
But you gotta, you gotta understand, I gotta do it right. Because they'll, they'll sue me in a heartbeat.
I've been trying to do it for months, I've been trying to do it for months, nothing gets done.
Give me a little time.
Okay.
Let me get a survey.
Okay.
And once we get a survey, and I know where that property line is, where the easement is.
Okay.
We'll take action, but right now, uh, telephone pole, I'm not gonna get sued there.
Okay.
I'm not moving stuff that I don't.
He's paying for this survey.
I will pay for this.
Well, I will help you, if you need a little extra cash on that, I'm gonna help you.
I just want to make sure it's done right.
Okay.
So, that, that's my whole point.
Okay.
Okay, same, that's where the order of, if the survey's done, so we know exactly where it is.
Okay. And if these ve, any vehicles are in the easement, they will be towed off.
We, we will deal with that, once we find out where the easement is.
Okay.
Cool?
So Tom doesn't already have the easement?
So, the problem with most of our roads is where is center line? And which is why they need a survey. I can tell you it's a fifty-foot easement or a sixty-foot easement. I can't tell you where it's measured.
It, you need to, that whole subdivision out there is a mess as far as property lines, you're opening up a can of worms. Right, well, I mean, even my property, I own like a big chunk over there, if I actually put a fence up on my property line, it would be in the middle of the intersection. The stop sign would be twenty feet into my property. But rather than being ass, I just kinda work with the pavement, the chip seal where it is. So, I mean, you're fixing to find out, that road might be thirty feet from where it's not supposed to be, or whatever, but.
What I need to do?
Okay.
What I need to do.
All right, now I guess that's it for my bit, sir. Thank you all for listening.
No, it's, it, this is what it takes, so we can get it done, so I appreciate you coming.
Okay, Naomi Ruth would like to discuss non-native electromagnetic frequencies and Faraday clothing for law enforcement.
Hi, uh, my name's Naomi Ruth, um, approximately about, it was over a year ago. Uh, law enforcement, uh, state police and, uh, sheriffs helped protect my life and the lives of my children through an apartment arrest. And part of that, I started doing, um, interviews with the state police before and after the arrest, as well as with, uh, sheriffs. And then I also did a job interview with Code Enforcement, actually. And I noticed that they wear webcams, um, a lot, and they rely upon them a lot for their job to do professionally. Um, and actually, about the year before that, about two years ago, for my son's homeschool, um, this is important information for all of us in the room, not just law enforcement, to protect our households and the lives of our children and things like that. But my dad actually gave me a book, um, he's been a, he, he was born and raised in Otter County. Um, and he gave me a book, um, and I went through it with my son for homeschool, and it was written by a man from Canada named Nicholas Pinaut, and it went through a lot of research from scientists all around the world, both the United States, Europe, Israel, all over. And they're finding a very consistency, consistent research is showing that non-native electromagnetic frequencies emitted from cell phones, laptops, wifi, like for example, this wifi box up here, and things like that, um, are harmful to human health. Um, they are expressed, it expresses differently depending on genetics, so it's not all the same. But for some people, it can cause infertility, other people, it can cause cancer, other people can cause weight gain. Um, other people, it can cause autoimmune diseases, and for, uh, it did mention fertility. Um, and there have been documented cases where people working, mostly usually with holistic health professionals, when they remove, for example, wifi from their home, or, um, start using Faraday cloth, um, that they can help actually recover and be a cancer survivor. Um, it can help prevent, um, I'm not sure with the heart health, but I am, I'm almost, after reading that book, a hundred percent, I'm ninety-nine percent positive that it also, I'm as detrimental to the heart health of the officers that are wearing those webcams. Um, and to protect them, their spouse and their children, but also, of course, this information, like I said, is good for everyone in here. I have a solution I thought about, um, and I bought this for my son after I did the research. I started buying these things, I, I purchased, I selected it for my son online, it's a cute little thing, he's grown out of it. But, um, this is actually called, it's from the Silver Wave brand, and it has, it's a Faraday undershirt that can be worn like lawn jons. So this is one option that can be used to protect our law enforcement officers. I think, I'm not sure with mental health, but it can also help keep them healthy to be able to enforce the law and help protect citizens, um, and not be suffering from like, um, their heart health, or their, uh, you know, like, God forbid cancer, you don't want that to happen to them. Um, and then also, uh, so I also, because this is a little bit expensive and I, I'm on a budget, so I bought through Walmart Marketplace some Faraday cloth, and I started making from a pattern, this is from a pattern from Walmart that I edited a little bit, but I added a Faraday silver lining to it, and this relaxes like the wifi. So when my daughter's wearing this, it actually helps protect her internal organs. Um, and then I made a plaid, this is a little attempt to take existing clothing and add Faraday cloth to it. So it looks a little funny, cause once I put it all back together, my, it was too tight on my son's shoulders, so a little, it's a little, I'm a little embarrassed by it, but it still has the silver cloth Faraday in it, so it helps protect his internal organs as well. Although I did find out, the best solution is, um, either custom tailored clothing, or buying from a manufacturer that makes these under, like lawn jons style Faraday cloth, um, clothing. Um, and so of course, this is beneficial information for all of us in here and our families, but especially protecting Otter County, keeping the law enforcement able to, um, respond well and not have, uh, maybe some kind of illness or something going on that could be hurting their family, you don't want that to happen. Um, so it's just something I've noticed, uh, with the law enforcement. Um, and I, I did mention it to the Code Enforcement, uh, manager that interviewed me, and he explained how much they rely upon the webcam to help protect them legally, so that they're not, um, sued and things like that. Um, and, uh, so anyways, it's just something where if they, they really, if it's really necessary for their job, they would, I would recommend this, but this is something that should be done for all of the law enforcement. I think both on and off base, and, and of course, around the world, but I just wanted to mention that, um, if you are wanting to know budget, things like that, I would ha, um, have to do research by speaking with the people at the state police and the police department and sheriff department to find out how many people are there, like how are, you know, from issued, and I don't even know any of that information. But I did wanted to at least start the conversation to help, um, Otter County be a safer community for everybody.
We appreciate that, it's very interesting, yeah.
Very interesting.
Yeah. All right.
Have you ever heard of any of this before?
I saw this item on the agenda, and I had no idea what you were talking about. I have done a lot of research since then.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is some pretty good stuff, and again, I've never heard of it. But they, they do make a lot of different types of clothing, um, I guess, what would you say, the different? It's like sixty percent, in fact, or ninety percent, and, uh, something.
Yeah, there's different choices depending on which company that you look at online, and as they test it, there's little meters that can be tested to see if, if it's penetrating the cloth or not.
Yeah, so I, I've, I've been trying to educate myself on, just, just to see what, what it's all about. Um, would this be something that, you know, just from what I've read so far, couldn't this be a benefit to us? These guys are wearing cameras, they got cell phones tucked into their vests, they got all kinds of electronics and stuff like that. They have laptops right there with them constantly used, so, um, this would be something that I'll continue to educate myself on? And can we, you know, implement some type of clothing under the vest or something like that? See if, see if it can help, so. I appreciate you bringing this forward, as I can say, this is something I, I've never heard of, so.
Well, thank you, uh, you're welcome, and then if there's anything I can do to help, uh, with doing research, I actually originally, for my son for homeschool, we're not homeschooling right now because of the situation that I mentioned, but, uh, when we are hopefully homeschooling again, I would like to do like, uh, projects with my son about this, um, particular topic. Um, so that, um, and my daughter, she's preschool age right now, though. But, um, if there's anything that we can do to help, just let us know as a family, I'd be happy to do that.
We've, thank you, that's very interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on unscheduled communication?
There, there wasn't when I looked last.
Nope, okay. All right, we'll move on to new business, uh, number twenty-four. We cast, request approval of resolution zero-one dash zero-eight dash twenty-six slash one fourteen dash thirty-seven. Disposition of personal property and fixed assets in accordance with state statute through govdeals.com and online auction service.
Amy, you've been to a lot of these, have, do they, people really show up and buy this old world stuff?
Yes, does very well.
Really?
Can you not see them hauling it down the road?
I do.
It's like the Beverly Hillbillies. Excuse me. Okay. I don't have any discussions, is anybody, are you gonna recuse yourself on this?
Yes.
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right. Uh, I make a motion for approval of resolution zero-one dash zero-eight dash twenty-six slash one fourteen dash thirty-seven. Disposition of personal property and fixed assets in accordance with state statute through govdeals.com and online auction service.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Amy's abstained. Okay, and we are removing number twenty-five, because I guess that was already taken care of.
Yes.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to number twenty-six, request approval for the renovations to the entrance of the administrative building in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
And commissioners, I did quite an extensive agenda report, do you have any questions?
I kinda freaked out about it, what is it gonna look like?
Um, it's, it's mostly glass, so when you come in, it's still very open.
So the, the wood doors are gonna remain?
Yeah, it's not the doors, the front doors, it's, the countertop is gonna be replaced, and it'll have bulletproof paneling in it, and then there's gonna be bulletproof glass that goes around, and a doorway where employees swipe a card to enter the building.
I don't know how I feel about that. I understand safety.
That's my main concern, is safety.
And I know that, that our, our country is, um, heightened in violence right now. But it's this many people causing that problem, and we're gonna be locking out this many people from services.
One.
I know, I just.
And I do, I, I have talked to the employees in the building, and they're very supportive, I've gotten the sheriff's support, Matt's support. Employees want to feel safe in their workspace.
Then let them carry a gun.
Some do already, but that doesn't, they may not be here when somebody comes in.
I just, I don't wanna lock out our citizens.
They'll still be allowed in, if they have an appointment, meetings, they still come in. We're not locking them out, they just can't freely roam around and come and go as they please. They have to sign in and be here for a purpose.
And I know this area's gotten, it's gotten worse over the years, cause the Flickinger Center literally has to lock their doors, and you ring the buzzer to let them in. They don't have people just looking in and out.
We have people come in using our restroom to bathe, to, we don't know what they're doing in there, they'll hang out half an hour, forty-five minutes. We have to call courthouse security to come remove people from the building because of that.
I was here one time, this is before you came in, but there was one that she overdosed in the bathroom, we had to call the ambulance and get her out, and remember that one?
So this is gonna lead into the assessor's office, the treasurer's office, the clerk's office?
Very well, yes, and I think all employees should feel comfortable in their workspace and feel safe.
And they're already pretty much secure behind glass and behind locked doors.
But a business doesn't have that, if it was a business, you'd have to welcome your emp, your customers in. You can't have they, where you have to make an appointment, or to.
You don't have to make an appointment, you can come in and say, I'm here to see Julianne, you call Julianne and say, this person's here to see you, and you say, oh, send them up.
This is just to hold them at, at upfront, so they can be screened, and, um, because despite having, you know, people working up there, people manage to slip through, and all of a sudden, they're up in my office, or, um, wandering around. And, um, some people are, or, some of these folks are agitated, and, um, it's, it is scary.
And the cameras alone are only outside, and they, that's not gonna save anybody's life, after the fact, it might help us find someone.
Okay, I mean, I've seen the sheriff's letter of support, and that, that makes me go, okay, I, you know, I, I definitely agree with the sheriff's recommendations, I just don't wanna feel like we're locking out the public.
No, they will still have access to the building, it's still a public building, they just have to have a purpose to be here.
Oh, I think it's needed, I think it's sad that we need it, but I think we do, it's the time we're living in, so, I mean, I'm in support of it.
From what I was told, the, the bank next door is locked their bathrooms, so they're telling them to come over here to, to come over here to go to bathroom.
Wow.
So you're just, you're getting all that local traffic.
From the homeless that are right here, behind the, by the museum, by the.
And then, you know where my wife's office used to be on Tenth Street, she had to lock her door all the time, because they would come in, demand food, demand money, demand to use the restroom. She would have to lock her door, get up every time somebody came to the door, it's, it's getting ridiculous.
It's, it's getting ridiculous.
Well, you know, when the Flickinger Center was renovating the concession stand, and the workers were leaving those doors propped open so they could get in and out, a guy came in there, stripped naked, ran around the theater, and one of the workers came and said, hey, there's a naked guy running around in here.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's bizarre over there down here sometimes, so, I mean.
I don't want that, I mean, I definitely want the protection of our employees, I just, I hate that we have to go to this.
I know, I know, I don't like it either, but I, I want them to be safe.
Okay.
I'd rather have this discussion than a bad discussion if something happened to somebody, so. Anything else?
I wish we could get a one-way sign that easy.
No kidding. Don't tr, dump your trash.
Right.
Okay, um, I make a motion, uh, for the approval of the renovations to the entrance of the administration building in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number twenty-seven, request approval to purchase wood display cabinets for the White Sands Museum of Film History collection, not to exceed five thousand dollars. An approval of the curation agreement with White Sands Theater.
And commissioners, um, our film liaison, Ms. Waffle, is here, and, um, uh, she can, um, uh, go up front and center and, um, answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm doing well.
I didn't realize this was for eleven of those.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Twelve, twelve displays total are actually needed to start with every decade from nineteen-eleven through the decade nine, of twenty-thirty. So, um, there's a prototype, it's already been made and paid for, that I took care of a year and a half ago. And, uh, it's gonna be the first display. So nineteen-eleven, we had three silent movies made, Bull's Gold Brothers and The Dude. And, uh, they're gonna be featured in the first decade from, uh, nineteen-eleven to nineteen-twenty. And then it goes from twenty-one to thirty, and on forward. And we're gonna put in memorabilia, movie posters, um, information and facts about the movie industry in town, and, uh, what our county has participated in. It's, uh, ninety-seven to ninety-eight films with locations since nineteen-eleven. And I don't think anyone knows that. Uh, the research that I've been doing for the last seven years, I've got this long list now. So, these display cases, uh, they are light, they are a shadow box with locks at top and bottom, so that once they're hung, no one can open them and take everything out of them. And it's basically gonna be posters and paper and light products, cause they hang on the wall. So, uh, and once the. So, and once the collection is done, the last one will be from 21 to 30 in this century. And so we'll have room for anything up through 2030 in that one. So it will last for a while yet.
So Jan, have you personally talked to each one of these suppliers that make sure you're getting apples for apples?
Yes, sir, I have.
Because there's a big difference between one price to the other prices.
And no one was more shocked by that than me. But I actually had everyone who submitted a bid, or even a couple more that didn't submit bids, they came and actually looked at the prototype, opened the doors on it, checked the polycarbonate glass, lifted it to see what the weight of it was, what the materials were that it was built out of, and I told them I wanted the exact same thing as the prototype, which is light and very efficient. And it, I was shocked that the bids varied that much.
And we approved you the $5,000 at the last meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's the only one, that's the reason why I'm asking, have you, is that the only one that comes in that?
Right.
In that range?
Yes, sir, but I asked for woodworking companies from Ruidoso in Lincoln County, six from here in Otero County, and I did not seek anyone out of Donna Anna County at all. I wanted to keep it in our region and our area. And these are the three written bids that I got, period, so.
So I'm assuming you're gonna go with the Gott brothers?
If that is what you would like for me to do, yes. That would save the cost and it would be where we could go back and get additional displays in the future at the same rate, that's what I'm hoping for. And I will have that verbal agreement with whoever you choose. But I believe that any of the three can do a great job. It's just the variation comes down to how much the price, but $2,000, that's more than half of the initial cost of what we sought to begin with. And the woodworking companies that I spoke with, I kind of had to persuade them, and I think I mentioned this before, I had to talk the Gott people into doing the prototype and doing them for us because their cabinet businesses and their woodworking businesses pay them so much more to do what they do than to actually put their time into something like this for us. And I think that that's a consideration for them on the price as well, is they know they can make more money doing something different for a homeowner. And so I'm hoping to secure a good source and one that won't overtax us monetarily or cost more than it should cost. You know, I did municipal service for 25 years and handling public funds and spending money that belongs to the public is a huge issue with me. I want to make sure that not only is it the lowest bid, but also that it's going to be cost-effective and a good product so that their money is well-spent and not spent frivolously or, in any other manner by me, for sure. And I wouldn't ask you to pay for anything that I thought was frivolous or that the public should not, you know, be in favor of paying for.
And so the Gott brothers are the ones that built the prototype?
Yes, ma'am, they are. And they have offered, we did a locking mechanism, top and bottom, so that once the shadow box is filled, it can be locked. I'm working with John Katie Graham, who is a filmmaker and an animator, on backgrounds that can be changed out so that they can be updated from time to time for a different look if we want to do that. And one of the printers here in town said they could print those backdrops, you know, from digital, you know, rendering, so, and they're basically going to be, except for the cost of materials, volunteering their time to help out with this. And I, almost everything that I've done has been volunteer and not paid for. It's either my own work efforts or the work efforts of people that I have prevailed upon to help me for free.
Jan, one thing I've noticed on here is they don't have a tax charge on here. The other two have taxes on it, so you need to follow up and make sure you don't wanna get hit with an additional five, six hundred bucks or something.
Exactly. Non-taxable versus taxable is something that I didn't stipulate with the others, but the county is a non-taxable entity with a non-tax certificate, so they would not be able to add the taxes on, and they would just need to be informed to remove that.
And is there no grants or anything for any future expenses like this that we can apply for?
I am not aware of any, Popple hasn't been asked to search for any that hasn't been brought to my attention.
And when you sent the grants over to me, I was so grateful and hopeful about that. And specifically, they specifically addressed the film industry as not being eligible for any of that.
Oh, okay.
And I was just like, wow, you know, I feel like a stepchild sometimes.
I think I sent it to you more of the museum, historical for the museum. So it's categorized as film, not a museum.
Right. So I'm really anticipating now, we're looking at probably September for the renovation to be anything close to complete for the theater. They had to push that back because of some surveys they had to have done. And so I have a little bit longer to get the displays together 'cause I was really getting worried that I wasn't gonna have enough time if I didn't get it on the agenda last month. So this month, I'm a lot more hopeful that there's gonna be ample time to do this and make it look really nice.
What happens if, if something happened to the White Sands Theater and it changed hands and it went down a whole nother path, what happens to these, do we get them back?
You get them back, you own them. The agreement that our attorney has drawn up, I'm so happy with. And it says that either party is able at any time, by mutual agreement, to request their removal. Whether that's the county to remove them and put them in a different location because you will own them, or it's the theater owner because he's going to sell the theater, or, you know, it's going to change hands and it will need to be removed because those are not part of the deal on buying that theater.
Commissioners, this is, you are so approving the agreement of that, which is attached.
Okay.
Yes, curation agreement. I had gone through every item and stipulation on the curation agreement, making sure that it was equitable and fair for both the county and the county's ownership of all of this and for the owner of the theater housing the collection for public display. Because it's wonderful to have a collection, but if you don't have a place where people can be attracted to events and draw tourism and draw the museum patrons that will come in to see this, it's pretty much a moot point. And really putting it on the second floor of the theater is going to be a great opportunity.
I'll make a motion to approve purchase of wood display cabinets for the White Sands Museum of Film History Collection, not to exceed $5,000, with ownership being by Otero County, the curation agreement and White Sands Theater.
I'll stick in it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you so much, I appreciate it very much, and I think that you will never regret being the owners of this.
Thank you for all your work. Okay, number 28, request approval for the assessor's office to temporarily change a GIS position to a contract position. Thank you.
Okay, hello again, commissioners.
Hello.
Yes, so like we kinda briefly touched on earlier, I have recently lost my GIS person to another county. I honestly don't know if she went to Donna Anna County Assessors or where, but she's in Donna Anna now. The request for this change comes with various different things as I, that's what I just kinda handed, or that's, that should've been in the agenda stuff that you guys should have. But with a GIS position, it's a very niche position, so it's, when you, when we were trying to replace the previous GIS person we had and Steve Dutil, my predecessor and the deputy had a very lengthy search trying to find someone and that position was vacant for quite a while. So it's just one of those positions where you have to kinda have knowledge in GIS. We are, we are unfortunately a little bit behind when it comes to certain things, when it comes to GIS, which is like the drawing of maps and things like that, that is a tedious portion of that job in detail. Right now, currently, we are, I have Amber here who is taking upon herself to kind of learn some of the finer points to, when it comes to drawing and things like that, so we can get her up to speed to where she may be able to just kind of like accept that into part of her responsibilities in the office. But that is gonna take some time because it is, again, a very niche position and it just takes time to train and practice on it. The paper that I just handed you is one of the companies that we have been able to acquire a quote from, where they can basically help get us caught up with some of the maps that we need to have drawn. And they can also help with other things that we may need help with just in, you know, future endeavors that we might have to go through, you know, when splits come into the county or new subdivisions and things like that. You know, they are able and willing to help us out with those types of projects. And as you see, like, they have a pretty, a pretty cool plan where they talk about, their standard rate is $150 an hour for the first five hours. And then after that, any type of, any more work after that, that would exceed those hours, they actually discount it down to $130 an hour. And again, it's something that we would honestly be saving money on because we're not just having this money being spent unless it's actually being used. You know, we pay them and we use them, which will actually help us out quite a bit because the GIS person that did leave had a pretty high salary. So we're actually anticipating saving money when it comes to that, if we can go with this contracted work with this company sent those. We're looking for other companies too, 'cause we know that there are, you know, the, having to find like different quotes, we're having a hard time finding other companies that can even provide us like a quote because they don't have the ability to find out like the data that they need to tell us what it would cost. So, you know, we are prepared for having to like, you know, write any type of like statement that says, you know, "We've looked, but we can't find it, you know, this is the one that's gonna be helpful and beneficial to the county." And of course, you know, just trying to help out as best we can when it comes to, you know, county funds and things like that, we just try to be as responsible as we can so we can make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck, so. Yeah, any questions you may have, we can definitely answer for you.
We have two GIS positions, correct?
Uh, no ma'am.
Just one?
Just one.
Okay, and I was trying to remember, I think that's $24 an hour?
Roughly, I think the salary for that one was about, close to $66,000, if I'm not mistaken.
And we're eight months behind, so I'm assuming the first eight months would be 40 hours a week?
Possibly, because like I said, Amber's been actually, she's, when we first started looking at this, which was kind of back in the beginning parts of, later, later, later November and early December, I came to Amber with a very pleading face and said, "Hey, can you help save us a little bit?" And so she's taken upon herself to like learn some things, and she's actually caught us up quite a bit. So I wouldn't necessarily say that we're probably, we're probably not really eight months behind still. Like, we do have, the drawing of the maps is the thing that's difficult. As far as like valuation and getting everything accurate in our camera system, that's all done. She's actually cleaned up what was a really big mess and turned it into like a nicely organized thing where we're not stressing out as much. So we can still do the things that we need to, which is, again, my office, we're tasked with discovery, listing and valuing of property, and we're well ahead of this curve with that right now. It's just trying to update the things for the visualization for people needing to see it on the map and everything like that, but I, not putting her on the spot, but I'm telling her, "Hey, I think you'll be caught up with learning how to do that within the next few months," you know, but we'll see. But again, this company will just kinda help us transition while she's learning, and if she can get to the point where she's actually comfortable doing this kinda stuff, then we can honestly tell this company, "Hey, thank you for the help and we no longer need your service."
What does one hour look like?
So, we don't have any outstanding large subdivisions that need to be done. We don't have, we have about, I would say, 66 combinations and splits that need to be drawn into the map. A combination is very simple, you highlight the parcels, you hit condense, and it does it. So that's how quick a combination goes. The drawing of individual parcels out of a larger one into smaller ones does take longer, but if somebody knows what they're doing, you're talking less than an hour per split. So we wouldn't be paying them for 40 hours a week for six months. I think in six months, we'd be struggling to find them the five hours of work per week that their contract requires.
And you can cancel the contract at any time?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. And, and just like, you know, anticipating for like, just things that, you know, just to kinda be aware of that this would be helpful for us, like while we're learning and trying to figure out this whole task, you know, obviously there's an election coming up this year, so to make sure we have the right maps and things like that for the clerk's office and all that, like, we're constantly thinking like, not only about our office, but how do we affect other offices? 'Cause the more and more I learn, we affect a lot of offices without me knowing, but we do. But yeah, we're just trying to make sure that we can not stress out, you know, you know, Ms. Selena Mays over there and her office with all the great things that they do, but just to kinda help them keep moving things smoothly. And honestly too, with Amber here doing the things that we're doing, we're trying to not only like catch ourselves up, but just kind of be more proactive and be better with helping out with, you know, zoning and planning. I plan on trying to help revamp that committee so we can be a little bit more cohesive with everybody in the departments. You know, John Barney actually took on a responsibility with addressing in the county. We felt like it was the best thing to do as far as like 911 emergency services, like, I told him, "Hey, I think it's obviously important for you to have that stuff solidified properly." 'Cause, you know, when you're talking about emergency services, that's life or death. So when him, him taking over that entity and things like that, like, we're gonna be working even more closely with their department just to make sure that we can keep things running smoothly. So everything that we're trying to do, we're just trying to make sure that it's cohesive amongst the departments that need to be, you know, utilized at the same time when it comes to this stuff, and it's just gonna help everyone all around, you know. Once they can catch us up and we're good to go, and again, when she kinda picks up the slack and she understands like how to do some of these things, which I know she can, she's very capable of it, that's why we kinda felt like, you know what, let's not waste the time looking for someone to try to come in and do this and keep letting the work pile up. Let's look at, you know, I'm very big on, don't, let's not look at problems, let's look at solutions, and this is a solution that we feel like is gonna be beneficial for our office, the county and other offices that are involved in the county as well.
I approached the state's PTD person, Larry Brotman, with this idea. I told him that James had suggested that we go out for a contract to see if it was possible to find companies. We did find three, one of them does Sierra Counties. They currently don't have the bandwidth to help us, but I have that in the email. I'm waiting on the second proposal, and then this is the third proposal. This company sent those, this is all they do, is they help smaller places do GIS work because it's so hard to find a GIS person anymore. And then Larry Brotman actually... And then Larry Brotman actually called me back and asked us who we had found to do the work for us because they were going to suggest it to another county that didn't have a GIS person and hasn't been able to find anybody either.
I understand the need, for sure, and there is not enough employees and talent out there, I get that.
Right.
So it'll be for, for six months, it'll be six thousand dollars a month at forty-eight hours a week. That's thirty-six thousand for six months. And we're halfway through the fiscal year, so if we currently pay that sixty-six thousand a year, that means thirty-three thousand is what we have left in that budget, so we're actually spending three thousand dollars more.
And again, that's, that's anticipating that we actually need that much time to get all that done. I, like we were talking about, I don't believe that it's going to take that because she's already kind of cleared up a lot of the brunt of that work. So I, again, I can't say like with a hundred percent confidence, but I would say I think that our number's actually going to be below that when it's all said and done before this fiscal year ends.
We all do, we're just going to get further behind.
I know, I know.
And I don't know, do you know Baxter Patel?
Yes, ma'am.
You might check with him and Almonteau and see what all they use, because I know they've got some mapping services over there.
I've, I've actually talked with him, I had lunch with him, and I, I actually was asking him about, because I kind of foresee what was happening, and we talked back in, I want to say it was like early October, and he doesn't technically have, because I actually thought about like, hey, like, can I look at contracting you? And he doesn't have the right personnel to do what we need to do on our side. Obviously, you know, they survey and things like that, but they are not equipped with the right software and/or capacity to do some of the splits and assemblages, the combinations and things like that, that we have to have done for the county. And he said that he would also look around and just see, but, you know, we've, we've kind of talked, and he was like, I haven't found anything. But, yeah, I mean, we're, we're definitely in contact with him too, so.
And I think it's so needed. You got a GIS map for area?
No. We, we got a spot for you if you want, you know, we got a desk and everything, if you want to come do it for us, we'd, we'd appreciate it.
Not even a hundred percent sure what that GIS even means.
I'm not going to lie to you, sometimes I feel the same way. So, yeah, that's why we're like, hey, we got to find something, so, yeah, I get it.
Have you got any more questions?
No.
All right. I make a motion for the approval for the assessor's office to temporarily change a GIS position to a contract position.
I'll second.
Um, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, number twenty-nine, request approval for raise the daily fee from six dollars to nine dollars a person at the Sydney Paul Gordon Shooting Range beginning February first.
I'll make a motion right now to approve the raise. Second it?
Come on, you're stealing my thunder.
You did great.
And I still got two more things on.
Greetings, commissioners, greetings and salutations from the Sydney Paul Gordon Shooting Range. I'm Mark Douglas, your host and guide. Okay, for number twenty-nine, actually, six dollars is incorrect, it's actually, the current rate is seven, we'd like to raise that to nine dollars. And we would like to make that effective in March and not February, so that we can give our independent firearms instructors sufficient time with this information so that they can make their business plans and make their changes accordingly. I think if we do it in February, it's just going to be a little too quick. So we, so, you guys want to vote on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the raise for the daily fee from seven dollars to nine dollars a person to the Sydney Paul Gordon Shooting Range, beginning March first of two twenty-two.
Second it. Um, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, commissioners, one down, two to go.
Okay, now number thirty, request approval of ten thousand dollars to connect electricity to the portable building brought, brought to the Sydney Paul Gordon Range by Fuller Foundation.
At this time, I'd like to call the president of Fuller Foundation, Ward Kenyon, to come up here and answer, so he's available to answer any questions that might come forth out of this request.
Can we have an extra generator?
We're going to need more than a generator.
I don't know, diesel's under three dollars, I celebrated.
I was in Lubbock, and the gas is a dollar ninety-five.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, seven ninety-five.
However, however, I have seen the price jump from two oh five to two seventy-nine in less than twelve hours in, in town here.
I know.
So what we're looking at is Eric, the superintendent of the facilities, came out and looked at the building, and we were talking about that, and he got some prices to me. We are looking at about ten thousand dollars, I believe we're looking at about thirty-five hundred dollars to get electricity into the building from a power pole that would be placed next to the building to get PNM to come out and put a transformer in, and running wires from the transformer to the, I'll call it a service pole. He was, Eric was told it was going to be like six thousand five hundred dollars. I realized then that I had made a very bad career choice twenty years ago when I should have become an electrician, because they charge, they're very proud of their work. So that's what we're looking at, is about ten thousand dollars to get that building electrified.
The co-op doesn't go right there, it's definitely PNM?
Yes, it's PNM.
Because the co-op charges twenty-five hundred for the drop.
Well, that's the price that Eric quoted me, I did not talk to PNM. And the sad thing is, is the pole is like thirty feet away from the building. However, like I said, I made a bad career choice twenty-five years ago, I should have been an electrician.
So you have to get a drop pole too?
So the drop pole is actually going to be by one of our contractors, the Zuni Electric, and let me just check and see what I've got here.
It's just a meter that'll come off the main power line, just like you would to a house or mobile home.
Yeah, so their actual quote was five thousand five hundred, and they're going to put a two-hundred-amp meter box on the building, because I think it's at a hundred. And then they actually said trench work, but there's, it's going to be less money because we're just going to put a service pole next to the building and run the wires from the transformer to the service pole, instead of trenching it over.
Well, since you won't rub two sticks together to do it, then.
Mark, this is the stuff you should be bringing in at budget time.
I was thinking that when.
And your next little item, too.
Okay.
I was thinking that when I read it last night, too.
Okay.
Because we've got enough new stuff going on right now, in my opinion, it needs to wait till we budget it in, and then we get the money allocated for it and brought in. I understand you got a new building sitting there, and you want to use it, but.
Yeah, and it's also to help get rid of congestion, because we are running into congestion with our current classroom with our firearms instructors. So we, we definitely need to get that building up and running as quickly as possible. My concern with the budget, going through the budget cycle, is I probably will have to wait until August the first to get, to get the, like, you know, to start getting the building operational.
Commissioners, may I ask a question? Mark, in addition to the electrical, will you need to have monies to renovate the inside of the building?
That's a good question, we're in the process right now of tearing out what used to be in there, it used to be a computer lab, so we're tearing that up, but they're probably going to need some funding for that, and I believe that's going to be negotiations between the Fuller Foundation and the county.
But you said the pole is thirty-five hundred, so I'm assuming the rest of the ten thousand is going to be for the renovations?
No, the request for ten thousand is just to get, to get that building up to code and get electricity into it.
So up to code means the inside renovations?
No, just get electricity to where you can plug it in or turn the lights on.
The electricity, excuse me, the wiring inside the building is already up to standard, up to code. It does not have a meter box on the outside, because it was run off from the school building at La Luz. So it just had a wire, wires going directly to it, and then the meter was on La Luz School. So it would require an amp panel to be in a meter panel, and then that would be attached on the opposite side of where the circuit breaker panel is, that's on the inside of the building. Many things needs to be discussed, and one of the first things was, we didn't know exactly where this was going to fall when we were able to get the building and put it on property. I mean, an eleven-hundred-dollar building was a great deal, and then it costs seven thousand dollars to move it onto the property. Still a great deal, because they're out there, the best price you can get is fifteen thousand, and then that's not delivered. So looking at it to make it viable, usable, we went through a detailed screening list of things, and we realized that to get it to look like the current portable building out there, that's going to take a couple of years, that's not going to happen overnight, a couple of budget cycles with Fuller as well as with the county. So the decision factor is, what does the county prefer us to do? We sat down with representatives of the county and different departments and to see what would be the advantage to the county. Would it be better for just Fuller to say, we're donating the building as is, have a great time, we're here to volunteer to help with things? Or would it be better for Fuller to do some of this work with our funds? Again, as long as we're supporting the range, it's the main purpose of our funds. Then the next part is, it's, that would be a shared process. Then the next part is, no, it's Fuller's responsibility one hundred percent. So we need a, we really need a really comprehensive decision on what is the pleasure of the county when it comes to this, this building. I see the avenue for the, for the purpose of the building is wide open, whether we use it for educational purposes and an office for a person, or break it up to have it multiple classrooms. We've got a big classroom already with the current portable building that's there, or, and we could split this building in half, basically, with partition, and have smaller classrooms, because most of the concealed carry classes are usually less than ten people. And so looking at that design, putting in some architectural ideas on that. So, there's a lot of information, what is the pleasure of the county when it comes to that building?
Commissioners, if I may, it sounds like there's, there's ideas about classrooms and partition walls and whatnot. I believe that needs to be designed and cost estimates brought forth. You had mentioned it may take a year or two before all of this is done. Instead of piecemealing it together, maybe Trent can look at, let's find, let's get some plans, what we want to do with the building, let's get some cost, and let's bring this forward during budget cycle, is my recommendation.
Because I would like to do the whole thing, like you said, the interior, get it up, don't drag it out for two years, because it'll just sit there and rot.
Well, I'm not going to let it sit there and rot.
Wow.
I've already, he's already tired of seeing me already, and frankly, Fuller's ready to put a pole in right now and get electricity to the building. But it comes down to, are we donating it to Fuller or to the county? Or is it a shared use, where both of us have an interest in, in it? Or is it flat Fuller, and then we pay a fee because it's setting on the Sydney Paul Gordon Shooting Range land? As I said, I'm.
That would be in agreement, I don't know how the county, the attorney, can you operate two different deals on county property if you're a joint deal with it?
There's, there's ways we can make it work.
And, and that's fine there. County right now, not airing a bunch of laundry, but the county has a lot of expenses right now.
I see.
That's kind of in the shadows back there, that, that's why I'm saying wait till budget, to where we can get you, and it would be really nice to have, like you said, a full meal deal and get it in, and don't ask for a skid steer.
Well, Fuller's going to donate one of those.
A skid steer?
Did I say that out loud?
He did.
In the.
This has been a running, a running discussion for years.
In the, in the monthly budget for December, there's a beautiful photograph of a gorgeous skid steer at the range. It is very, very exciting for me to, to share that photo with you. I'll make sure it takes up the whole page.
And to close on the part of the portable building, Fuller continues, we made a list, and I'll have it available for you, of what we feel needs to be done to the building to make it usable immediately, and then also what we'd like to see in the future. We would still like to have that input, but also, Fuller, right now, is not going to stop. We're going to continue to make the building as amenable to get electricity in, to get those things that we need in the future at our expense already, unless the county says hands off.
I don't think.
I'm pretty sure we're not going to say thank you.
No, no.
Pretty sure we're not going to say thank you.
Something else I have to go along with that, I made a, Fuller has been producing an email, excuse me, newsletter for months now, and I thought I'd give you all an early edition copy of the newsletter and see what we're putting out there for advertisement, what we feel we're doing to help the Sydney Paul Gordon Shooting Range. So it's not just coming up here and saying, hey, here's an idea to make it happen, okay? So let me pass these out to you all.
While we're talking about the range, have we heard anything on that? Did they approve that property on the, thank you?
The, from the hospital?
Yes.
You approved it last month.
Yeah, but they, they, it's a done deal?
I, I just have to finish the deed and work with John Wheeler to seal the deal.
Perfect.
It's just a formality.
Okay, so are we going to just table thirty and thirty-one until budget season?
I would like to get them electricity. Yep, so I would like to, I know, request approval, I would like to make a motion to approve the ten thousand dollars to connect electricity for the portable building brought to the Sydney Paul Gordon Range by the Fuller Foundation.
I'll second. Um, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I would like to make a motion to table for the benches for your budget season.
Thank you, two out of three, not bad. Appreciate that, thank you, commissioners.
I'll take my leave. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please don't hesitate to ask any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to give you guys a quick update, our latest, our latest grants that have gone to improvements is about ninety percent done. We're just waiting on three shade structures to be built, and soon as the contractor is done with the fire stations, he should be done by the end of January. Then I'll be hunting for more grants to do some more improvements, but we, we have, we have five ADA parking spots now throughout the range, and then we have the two canopies on the two-hundred-yard range and on the fifty-yard range. They were put up really quickly, and many of our old customers, both age and using the range, they are super happy with the new design. So it's money well spent. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, number thirty-two, discuss and consider reorganization of the Luton County Commission Board.
I make a motion to have Biggs as chair.
Oh, you want to do it again?
I'll do it again.
All right.
Do you, okay, do you want to be vice again, or do you want Amy to be vice this time?
I'll be, well, it doesn't matter, whatever you want to do.
I'm plenty go-karting being low man and total pole.
Do we need a vote on it?
You need a second.
I'll second.
You made it, okay. Um, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mine is short and sweet, I was sick for three weeks and didn't get out much. That is it.
That is? That's the shortest one in history, I think.
Okay, let's see. Okay, let's see. So our community listening sessions for behavioral health started. I attended the one in Capitan. I went to the commissioners' portion of the Cattlemen's Meeting in Albuquerque. I went to a Realtors' Lunch, a statewide national, I mean, national, a statewide Realtors' luncheon. I went to the community listening session on behavioral health in Carazoso. I went to the FRW Christmas Lunch in Donna Anna County. I went, didn't go to that one. Let's see. Didn't go to that one. Sorry, I didn't write it down in advance. Alamogordo Christmas Parade. The Criminal Justice Committee on Zoom, attended that. Attended the Alamogordo Community Listening Session. Federal Land Council's call-in. And I just lost my... I attended the Muscolero Zoom Community Call-In, the Tula Rosa Community Behavioral Health Listening Meeting. Where else? I attended the Christmas Party for the Muscolero Administration. That was really good. That was fun. And I think that kind of catches me up with enough, I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, let's see. I chaired the New Mexico-Arizona Coalition of Counties Meeting in Albuquerque. I attended the New Mexico Cattle Gorge Conference in Albuquerque, and the first time I had the commissioners meet with the cattle gorges, and that was a good meeting. Walked in the Christmas Parade, and that was very well attended. That was a good parade. I attended the Capitol Outlay Meeting at the Antimountain Gods along with Sheriff Black and Captain Corcoran, Pamela and Sylvia. I attended the Advisory Board Meeting at the Otero County Extension Office, attended a U.S. Agricultural Policy Outlook Meeting, attended the final audit for Otero County along with Pamela and Julianne, and attended a special commission meeting regarding the metropolitan districting area for the Patriot Point Apartments. And that's kind of been what I've been doing.
And I forgot to say thank you. We attended a Bint Community Meeting, and Tom and RB both went with me on that. We had about 50 people, I think, in that room, and I think it was one of the best and most productive that we've had, so that was really good.
Commissioners, I'm going to start off with telling you the governor has appointed Rex Wilson to the open senate seat while we were in the meeting.
Okay.
I attended the ribbon cutting at OCDC for the micro market, their kiosk. It's really awesome. I would like to get something half that size put in this building. And it is run through our commissary at the jail. It runs on that contract. The employees are really excited. They've got a lot of great things in there from aspirin to Lane cuisines, burritos, breakfast sandwiches, monster drinks. Attended the legislative hearing in Rudosso. RB and I met with the new CEO of Christus, Ruben Murray, as a meet and greet and to discuss the billing that is done through OCDC for inmates. It was a productive conversation. RB and I met with a staffer with Heinrich's office. She asked to meet with us to discuss our needs, funding opportunities, so that was, it was very productive. Attended the Audit Exit Conference. I have also had several teams meeting, so Civic Plus, to get the foundation set up for our new agenda software. We're hoping to kick that off in March, March 1st. And then I wanted to let you know with broadband that Mitch Hibbert was supposed to be here. I made a mistake and gave him the wrong date. So he will be here in March. In addition, my broadband consultants that I work with are going to be at that same meeting, and the reason Mitch and I are working together, too, is that I have done a letter of support, and with the public Wi-Fi grants through OBE, I did a letter of support so that we can get public Wi-Fi in our community centers. So that was one of the things he wants to update you on, too, and that is all I have.
What about Lawluz Canyon, Cottonwood Canyon, La Pasita Canyon?
That's, I pointed out that area to our broadband consultants. I have not had a meeting with them in a couple of weeks. We're going to have a call next week, so I'll, I'll let you know.
Good morning, commissioners. I did get a response from the individual in charge of OHV management at Game and Fish, and she said she was happy to come to the county and meet with us and have a discussion. So I need to follow up and, and see what type of meeting we want to set up. I'm assuming all three of you would like to be present so we can make it like a work session or something like that, so keep you updated on that. I had a meeting with the Alamogordo City Attorney and the developer of the Sndero Apartment Project the other day, and they are interested in also doing, getting a metropolitan redevelopment designation to assist with, with their project and making it happen. It is inside the city limits, and so I shared that my belief is it would be best and most efficient if the city initiated it. If it comes from us, that, that adds a month to two months to the timeline and still requires the city to, to pass an ordinance like they did for Patriot Point. All of that would, would not have to occur if they took the lead. The city attorney advised that it was going to be a topic for their meeting the last week of January, and we'll see how the, the new city commission feels. And based on that, my understanding is that you're willing to support it if, if need be. So the, what I conveyed was, we'll see how the city approaches it. If they don't want to take the initiative, then I will have that for you on the February meeting to get the ball rolling. They're, they're starting the, the construction very soon, and so for them, the area would just be, need to be designated before the end of the year so that they would be able to get the tax breaks once the project's complete. He said that the latest numbers are that we're about 1,000 beds short for airmen. That's not even taken into account needs for, for family housing, and this project would deliver about 500 rooms, beds. This is definitely needed because those 1,000 airmen are living in Los Cruces or El Paso and commuting, which is taking money away from the county and city, and it's also impacting the quality of life of those airmen. Much rather they spend those two hours with family or friends and, or working out or doing something that isn't just driving. So I will keep you posted on that, and all the other stuff they have done in the past month's already been mentioned.
The February meeting, will I be able to watch?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You just need your laptop because we know on your phone it didn't work very well.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to hold an executive session under NMSA 1978, 10 to 15,1188. It is the sending and receiving litigation.
Need to do a roll call.
Commissioner Mark White here, Commissioner Matherly.
Here.
Commissioner Brel.
Yes.
Hey, John, will you get that, those numbers or a copy or email me or whatever?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to be in your email here in a little bit.